Go ahead and start the meeting. We are missing Colonel Baldwin, our mayor, but we couldn't let us begin our meeting as we usually do with a moment of silence. In this instance, I would like for us to think about the family of Hubert Cadel. He was the WWII veteran that we had here who spoke and was just an absolutely charming addition to a meeting several weeks ago. He unfortunately died last week and at the age of 93. So he lived a long and very happy life and certainly brought joy to the town of Pittsboro for the short time he was with us. Is there a motion there?
Sir. Would anyone rise for a pledge? Pledge and lead is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have our agendas before us. Is there a motion to either approve the agenda or a motion to modify the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the modifications to the minutes that we have on our desk.
All right. If they're second to Michael Fiocco's motion.
Second.
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by John Bonnet. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. With respect to the consent agenda, which contains 11 items tonight, is there a motion to approve or are there pieces of that agenda that need to come off and go on to regular business?
Do you have something from the Central Electric?
They are here this evening. If you would like to hear from them, they have a short presentation that they could give if the board would like to see that or it could be moved through to the consent agenda, whichever we'd like. It's to the pleasure of the board.
I'll leave that to the board, but I didn't, I maybe spoke to Robertson, but I didn't get the, it wouldn't upload on my computer. I didn't get to see the thing.
How does the board feel?
I'm okay leaving in all the consent.
All right. And Jay Farrell, is your motion then to approve the consent agenda in its entirety or are there things to be taken off and adjusted?
We would just leave that to you.
Second.
Moved by Jay Farrell, seconded by Michael Fiocco. Those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. The next matter is the public expression speakers. There are two people signed up and Lisa Meeker is signed up to speak on Southeastern Concrete. Would you come to the podium? Say your name and address if you would.
My name is Lisa Meeker and I live at 356 Main Bon Road. And I and a number of my neighbors here are just concerned about what's happening with the Southeastern Concrete right across the creek from our subdivision because we can't find any information about what is going on with it and there's no site plan that we can come up with and we just have a lot of questions before we can allow them an access through our property. So I've never done this before, so I don't know exactly when I'm supposed to do this. We have questions about the zoning. We understand that it involves real zoning, but according to the zoning ordinance, it says that the purpose of this district is to permit the normal operation of almost all industries excepting those that would be detrimental to adjoining properties. Well, we feel it would be detrimental, I think, to our property because of dust and no limits and all kinds of things and it's going to affect our property. So it says excluded from this district are those industries which are noxious by their emission of smoke, dust, fumes, glare, noise, and vibration. So my husband is, he's a one transplant patient and we're just very concerned that any dust issues are going to be detrimental to his health. And there's a lot of older people in our neighborhood and children and if there's a lot of dust that's emitted from this property, then that's going to be a real problem for our neighborhood. So I guess that's what we're just trying to find more information.
Thank you, Lisa. I delivered a copy of the site plan to one of your neighbors the other day. It is on the, should be on the.
That's the Capitol.
Okay.
Which is across the highway.
You have, okay.
So that we, they want an access for water and sewer through our community property. That's a vacant, vacant lot basically. And we don't know what size water line they want to, you know, there's just a lot of concern and we wanted to see a site plan so we could see how to the, and to the community that it's going to be existing. And they, I went to town planning on Friday and they didn't have anything, they didn't have any application or anything she's got.
Yeah. The planning director is telling me that it has not been submitted yet.
Okay. Well, we're just concerned that, you know, we're trying to get some, at least some pretensions for ourselves and I'm just not convinced that this kind of an operation is beneficial to our community in this location because it just is going to affect our property a lot. So it seems like the zoning there should be maybe M1, not M2 and something more just lawyer business that's not going to be a big huge impact to us. You know, we're not anti-business, but we also want to protect our homes and families.
Meeker?
Meeker, yes.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. I heard from a neighbor of yours and I think you first heard of this through your HOA, is that correct?
Yes.
And I was hoping to communicate from your HOA, I indicated it was a map included but there wasn't one. Have you pursued that through the HOA?
This would be the map included.
There wasn't a map included, okay.
But it's kind of a map. It's just sort of a shaded area, but it doesn't include any kind of a site plan. So that's not a map, as far as I can see. Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ed Fowler. Ed, if you'll come to the project, please.
Hi, I'm Ed Fowler. I also live in Potterstone, 86 Winsong Drive. Lived there since 2004 and to add to what Lisa was asking was, my curiosity is where are we really in the stages? There is still an opportunity to get a voice to the board and do anything about bringing a second concrete plant. I was totally shocked when I went to the HOA meeting. I was just thinking about the former Chicken Plant that was going into a concrete plant. Now to find another concrete plant, when there's another concrete plant over on Small Street, it's kind of a segue into how many concrete plants could we need in this vicinity within how many square miles and adjacent to one of the, I would say, I'm guessing here that we have one of the larger communities, maybe the third or fourth largest community with 200 homes in the area, equivalent to about 400 or 500 votes. We're looking for support from the board to take that into consideration because as she touched on, I'm really concerned about moving out of Dodge if that thing gets put in the back. I have the video here I can share with you. I work right next door to a concrete plant. I work at Hill Dispersed Source in Apex on 64, which is a very industrial area. You'd be shocked at how loud and how dusty and I don't know if there's carcinogens coming from that dust just from the concrete plant from the mixer. I could play the video for you if I could find it, but it was, that was about a football field away and I go, holy crap, I couldn't believe it. That was just one truck being filled up and then with all the trucks coming in and out throughout the day, the amount of dust and that and if you know anything about concrete plants, if they fill, you know, they try to dampen it and stuff, but there's still a lot of studies. I don't know if a study could be done, environmental impact statement, not only for carcinogens in the air, like, you know, Lisa's concerned, just whether, you know, you have such a bad situation as her husband has, but just for people breathing in the air day to day. When that wind comes through, especially when the leaves are out and, you know, are gone, there's no buffer there at all, the noise and the stuff that comes through there is intensified throughout part of the year. We'd like to have your windows open, you know, otherwise it might be too hot to do that. So the impact on resale value, I think, is going to be tremendous. The noise level, I don't know what the noise level requirements are, but having even gone down to the city tap when we used to have to measure it, the amount of noise coming from a band, you know, playing that I'm sure is nowhere near the amount of concrete facility, I've got to think that the noise level's got to be breaking some kind of law. I know that when we brought this up with the Chicken Plant and we worked with them as good neighbors before and they moved the trucks to the back, Jim, Jim Nass and myself went over and met with them and toured the facility and, you know, good neighbor policy, there's nothing we can do about it. We moved in, they were there first. But, you know, the question to the board is what are you guys looking at as a board representing us to, you know, to really value our concerns over there? Now then, the other topic of sewerage coming in, I've had problems with sewerage because I'm on a down slope where my house is and it can back up and if you've ever had sewer gas in your, in your house, it's not a fun thing. It's not a fun thing at all. And now if you're tacking on more sewerage into the pipeline that they want to get into, they say they have options. There's that, you know, with that particular plant. I don't know how much water they're going to be using too, so what's the impact going to be on water quality, water pressure in our neighborhood? A lot of questions with ecological balance in the community, you know, as Lisa just read out, I mean, please pay attention to that excerpt that she read because it doesn't appear that that's being taken into consideration from our point of view for the members of Potterstone Village. So a direct question would be where exactly are we with Southeastern coming in? I think Capitol Concrete has already sailed and that's a done deal, is that correct? That ship has sailed?
Yes, it was approved in October of last year.
Yeah, that's what I thought and I didn't think that, they're actually, it's actually going to be worse because they're going to have two or three shifts doing concrete forms. So they're going to have noise all throughout the night. At least this gentleman that met with our HOA president from Southeastern said that they would, for the most part, we'd work in like a 6:00 AM to like 5:00 PM shift. You know, so, you know, 6:00 AM is a little bit early for me. Our own HOA doesn't allow you to even mow your lawn until after 8:00, you know, much less bring a concrete truck within a couple of minutes. But, you know, I think, like I said, there's that situation to concern too. So we're talking about getting things in writing from Southeastern who's talking to Brian. I don't think Brian's here tonight, our HOA president. How many people are here from Potterstone tonight with this issue? Show hands. Anybody else in the hallway? I mean, this, this is going to become a bigger deal because we now have to do a vote by the end of May, is what I'm told, right? Is that the deadline to get this in? So it's catching a lot of people's attention, maybe hopefully not too late, we're not here too late with that ship has sailed already, that we can do something about it. But I don't think we need another concrete plant for backyard. That's my appeal to you guys, you know, we've got a couple already. It's kind of like gas stations too. How many gas stations do we have here? So, you know, along those lines too, on the very corner, since I'm on the top, Mr. Holmes owns a piece of property, that every time I've come down and looked into it, it's, I see a zone residential. And I brought it up before with the board and there's, there was never a clear thing on that with all the trucks that are in there. That actually impacted people buying our homes when they saw septic tanks out there and gas tanks right outside of our, around the corner there. So you can imagine the reaction to two more concrete plants being adjacent to or within shouting distance, which if I wanted to sell and get out of Dodge, I think I have to divulge it once I can be sued now that I know about real estate law. You know, so, you know, I can, I don't even know if I have that option to get out of here without using my shirt on, the house itself. I don't want to do that. I love the neighborhood, I love the people. I'm very active in the social committee and I've been on the board for a number of years itself. So, you know, I guess I'm pleading to the board itself to please communicate, it's our fault, we should be attending these things, but the second concrete plant just kind of like tipped the iceberg, remind me. And, you know, they had a note from half one. You know, I imagine some kind of industry is going to be back there where the Chicken Plant was. You know, thank God it's not a chemical plant or something worse. There's always something worse that could be put in there, but please consider those homes and those families that are right there adjacent to this, especially the folks, I'm up the block a little bit, so I'm a little bit sheltered and maybe the people that are further up towards the back in the newer part, you know, won't feel the impact, but they were feeling the impact of the water sewer treatment plant which they want to work on. So we're kind of surrounded in that area.
I don't understand that, but so where is this located in relation to the neighborhood?
If you, if you know where the pond is as you pull in, right across from there, there's an open area and the sewerage line is supposed to come in there. Now, I'm assuming, and I don't know who's got the map again, if you want to show it to, to the mayor and the board up here, but it looks to me like it's right smack in the middle of Mayfair across from, so anybody that has houses that back up to the area where there's a little, I would call it a river creek, you know, I think that's, those are the houses that are going to be impacted, the most to hide this. I think it's seven, is it seven acres?
Seven acres.
Seven acres is what I heard.
Mr. Fowler, I have one question. You said you had an upcoming vote and is that on the sewer line, the easement?
Yeah, they want us to consider allowing them to tap into our sewer line and it's an alleged negotiation going on. I'd love to be in the middle of that negotiation because I don't think we're negotiating at all, but then I started thinking, when I first heard the word negotiation, I was thinking the whole time, it's the first half hour of the meeting, we're talking about Capitol. So then I was blown away by how close this facility is and it's another facility with a different type of, perhaps noise and that because of the trucks and that, so natural concrete trucks. So we were told that, I guess the deadline was imposed by whoever, Brian, and I don't want to speak out of turn, please correct me because, you know, I came in late in the game here. We had to get something out by the end of May and to do that, I don't even know if we can get a quorum to even get a vote. Getting people to vote and getting people to attend meetings, this was the, as soon as this word came out, it started to spread around, this was the largest attended meeting since 2007 when I moved in there and it's caught a lot of attention. So I think a lot of prospective voters are going to be, you know, have a say in what's going on right there. If we still have the opportunity to have a say, I still, I'm not sure that we do, but better late than never. Try now. So I don't know if I answered your question, but yeah, we were supposed to, there's been, I can divulge what I know, you know, they're offering to give us $5,000 for the first two years to allow them to tap into their, you know, tap into our sewer line. So that must mean that option B, whatever that might be, I don't even know if there truly is an option B. It was presented to us as there's an option B down the road, nothing specific, that if we don't do it, they're coming anyway and they're going to be there, so we might as well get something out of it, was kind of the way it was presented, you know. And from what I took away, everybody might hear something different, but that's what I heard.
But the mechanics from the town's standpoint are such that since the application has not been submitted yet, Jeff, do you have a thought about how that, is there required communication with the community and is that what they're fulfilling right now?
Well, the only reason that they're talking to the community is that the concrete plant needs the easement through their community property to get to a town sewer line and water line. Otherwise, they're going to have to move, go around on Pittsboro-Moncker Road through the other concrete plant to get to our public line. There's a certain point on Pittsboro-Moncker Road where the Chicken Plant had lines put in, they were private lines, they were made private to a concrete plant coming in. There was, this was an alternative for Southeastern Concrete to get water and sewer, was to go through Potterstone to see if they could get any, you know, no one's spelling Potterstone, they have to do that.
Okay. And plan B would be that they would.
They'd have to go a further, a longer distance around and they would have to negotiate with other property owners such as the concrete plant that's Capitol Concrete.
Suppose we both said no, it's out of possibility?
Yeah, all that's possible. Those are private negotiations, the sound of it could involve.
Is there eminent domain that would be involved?
If it was, you guys would make that proposition.
All right, thank you very much.
That to me is interesting, that last point. So we should take that back to Brian and the community. Any suggestions for us?
What was the last point?
If you repeat, what was the question?
The fact, the fact that they might not be able to get in if they can't tap in, you know, they're going to have to tap in somewhere to sewer line. Now is that something, you mentioned the word eminent domain, what are the options if, if the two options say no? They can't move in?
Those are decisions that will have to be made by this board or other boards if they're not here, but I can't speak for an elected board what they might or might not do, but that would be the only option.
Could you make us do it if they wanted to? That's what I'm trying to find out.
I don't think the town would.
Okay.
We might could, but I don't think.
That's not, that's not entirely done.
Yeah, okay. Again, any way, you know, there's a whole number of ways to, I hate that expression, but I was going to say, you know, to go, to move on this and that, you know, whatever way it is to prevent it from happening, that's, that's my agenda and I think the agenda, I don't know anybody that wants it there. Is there anybody here that wants the concrete plant here?
Well, that's not a, that's not a criteria, unfortunately. It is what it's zoned and as soon as the application is made, if the zoning is still in that fashion, it would remain an obligation to meet those criteria.
I suspect that they're trying to get you all to provide an easement to be able to submit to the town for us to review.
Right.
Because that's part of the review process is where's your water and sewer coming from? And that's why they've imposed a deadline on law of sometime in the, end of this month. Otherwise, if they can't answer those questions because they can't get into the supplemental process, thus there's no plans to review. And we're kind of in the loop until they can answer their own water and sewer question.
Okay.
Yeah, that's sort of where we are.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure. I'm just trying to get your name.
This is Jeff Jones, the planning director.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
We have other business we need to move on.
Can I just finish with the one point though, which is, this is M2 zoned right now? Is that correct? Just want to make sure.
Yes.
So the point that accepting those that would be detrimental to adjoining properties excluding from the district are those industries which are noxious by emission of smoke, dust, flame, layered noise, and vibration, and those industries which deal primarily in products such as explosives? Well, that kind of makes it fun, but is that something that you can consider taking another look at, please?
I'm sure the board will take that into consideration. We've got, got to have something before us before we can answer.
There's probably more, so we don't know, we don't have any information.
I mean, you knew more than we did.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And that's one thing, and that is that as a board, we can't say, oh, we have too many gas stations, we have this and that. If it's a legal business and it's, and it's allowed in the city, we are not legally allowed to say no. We're bound by the, by the law.
I mean, reading that portion makes it feel to me like you could.
Right, that there might be some.
All right. That's the end of our citizens matters. The next item on the agenda is commissioner update. In the last month, I've been to a number of meetings at Tramway J County Government, done a welcoming to the congressional, six congressional district convention that was held here at the Ag Center, went to the funeral for Mr. Cadel, the man that we discussed at the beginning of the meeting. Met with the folks from Central Electric Membership Corporation, whose item was on the consent agenda. And that was a Boy Scout to fulfill citizenship and a community badge and had several phone calls back and forth between state agencies and the North Carolina State University scientist, Detla Nappi, who has been advising us on the presence of 1,4-oxine and bromide in our drinking water. Are there other commissioners who have been attending meetings that they'd like to report on? Main Street, Tramway J, climate change, EDC?
Yeah, I can mention a couple of things. I attended the EDC meeting and one of the things that I was afraid to say that I was not aware of, but things incredibly important to the community, is that the EDC has a loan fund for businesses and it's available for businesses within Chatham County. And it is a device, it's a loan that would offer collateral to the banks to encourage loans to be made. And it is a program that would go up to 50% of the loan amount or a maximum of $50,000. So obviously some small businesses could take advantage of that. I think it's a great program and want to let folks know publicly that it's available and to reach out to the EDC if you have such a need. PVA and downtown, well, PVA, the last meeting I attended, the discussion was all about the overlay district and the UGO, so we've got folks highly interested in those items. And Main Street is at this point primarily working on a budget proposal. So we should see that increase.
Other meetings to report on? I attended a United Way volunteer work ceremony and got to meet lots of area active volunteers in the community, but they were very inspiring. I thought I'd mention that the Father's, the Human Relations Committee, Chatham County Human Relations Committee meeting is on 17th and the week after that is, it is ARC Legislature legislative day in Raleigh. Been most interested in sending that, I hope that I'll be able to send that a chance to visit with, there was no North Carolina legislature about ARC issues.
All right. And let's move to new questions. Jeff Jones will be leading up in the session of the NCDOT project prioritization.
Hey there, members of the board. Tonight we've got the state transportation improvement project, stop and know that will help the town and other communities in, they need to go through a prioritization of projects that we would like to use the DOT fund and complete within a relatively like 10-year period of time. Every couple of years, the town works with Chatham County, Stoller City, and Tarco to go through and submit projects for scoring in the DOT's scoring matrix that goes through. They tweak that scoring system every so often, every, every year or so. And we recently submitted, we submitted projects back in the fall, this board submitted four projects, including the Chatham Parkway completion out to 1551, a sidewalk to, from Powell Place up to 155, up to the high school. a sidewalk to, from Powell Place up to 155, up to the high school, a sidewalk to Town Lake Park and a sidewalk to the Community College on West Street. Those four projects, including with others in the county, were scored. And our scoring came back with the Chatham Parkway project scoring within the top 10 project list for the county. We take the list, and there's more than 10. There's probably 30 or 40 projects that have been submitted from the various cities and the county and Tarco and the division. And those are scored. And when we get those back, staff meets together to go over the list to sort of, again, rank, according to our communities, what would be in the top 10. Let's keep the top 10 on the list because those are the ones that potentially have chances to be funded through this funding cycle. Generally, it's probably more like the top three to four, maybe five, depending on the amount each project cost and how much funding DOT receives. So, we, when staff met, we went through the process to, to rank according to Pittsburgh, Chatham County, Tyler City and Tarco, what projects we would like to see move into that top 10 list. We actually had a couple of projects move up the list, so that was good. We had the Powell Place, the North, to the Northwood High School move into the, to number 10. And then, right outside of number 10 is the 87 and 902 widening from 12 lanes. To a 12 lane was a four-foot paved shoulder, so that's right outside. Staff, we ranked the top 15 that we would consider to have those ready, 11 through 15, to go move up if a project were to move off for whatever reason. Or receive funding from somewhere else, or a community said, no, at the last minute, no, we don't want to move that project forward. So, the project was moved up. Earlier tonight on consent, you all agreed to move forward with an agreement with the DOT to update our pedestrian and bike plan. You see a lot of projects on this list in the top 10 that are from Tyler City. And they have done just that, have a pedestrian and bicycle plan that is fueling their request to DOT through this, through this funding program. And I envision us having something similar. So, when the next round comes around, comes up, we will know our priority projects and we'll just be able to submit those already estimated out as well. Because that's a key component of our bicycle pedestrian plan. We identify our projects we want to do and have an estimate of that project so we can go right into this funding cycle. That's what this town's, we've been lacking for a little while. And so, we've kind of been throwing things into the funding cycle and not really having good data behind our requests. We do have a, a project that was approved several years ago that will be going forward. So, we'll be able to see that, that this does actually work. That is gonna be the widening of Little Street out to Powell Place. Widening and multi-use path on one side and sidewalk on the other. That was, that project was funded through this, this funding mechanism. So, tonight, each board, Tyler City, Pittsburgh, the county, were asked to bless this top 10 list. And so, we'll see this at our Tarco meeting moving forward. I think it's either this week or next week. I can answer, try to answer any questions at town.
Jeff, how do we move number 11 up?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. At this point, I'm not sure what we can do. Yeah, that's a important project for this town. It has been for a number of years. It continues to move up the list, though, so that's encouraging. We've had it be further down. One of the reasons that it was so far down in the past is that it was, we, the request was essentially from Pittsburgh all the way up to county line. And that funding was way off the charts. The cost was way off the charts. So, this last cycle, it was cut down to really the Pittsburgh area from 902 here in town to, I think, the bypass, or the pass to the bypass. So, that was, we were hopeful that it was gonna move up, and it did. But it just didn't get into the top 10. So, that's unfortunate.
What can we do during the course of this year to try to move it?
Yeah, so what we'll do over the next couple of, so this, the cycle will start again and won't be this, this year, this fall, but it'll be next fall. So, we'll be, we'll have our pedestrian and bicycle plan complete by then. Maybe we would have had some additional work done on streets and where we want to see those, new streets. A new transportation plan is sort of what I'm thinking is what we're gonna go through. We've been waiting for Chatham Park to sort of get a little bit further along on their, on their smaller area plan. DOT has as well to update our third area plan. So, that, that should occur in this interim period between now and then. And maybe that's when we can engage with DOT and others to emphasize this is an important project.
So, that sounds like we've got about two years, two years and more. And we back off from the two-year period. What do we have to have in place? Now, how, how long before this process starts again do we want to have that proper plan in place?
I would say at least by the spring of 2020, for sure.
Does it mean, because Tyler City has a bike head plan, meaning that these initial five things that are at the top of the list, are they gonna drop off, perhaps?
Perhaps, yes.
And let us move up?
Yes, yes.
And the other question in my mind is, how many times will Chatham Park necessitate a higher rating than ours? Because this is, this is crucial for downtown. This is basically the truck route that we would like to see to bring traffic around to the side instead of right through the central part of the town. And so...
So, I'm glad you brought that up. This is not Chatham Park property at all. This is just Chatham Parkway in name.
Okay.
And it actually will extend to eastern bypass around town from E Street, Business 64, all the way to 1551. So, I think the reason it scored well is that it's gonna be moving traffic essentially in a bypass form around town from the eastern side. But this touches no, no Chatham Park property itself, so it's all outside town. Just, just in name. We can name it something else if we wanted to.
But it will connect with the overpass article.
Oh, yes. And, and future improvements to Chatham Park that goes, continues more through their, through their project.
And, and the thing that struck me, and Mayor, I appreciate you bringing it up, is that is a, that's a greenfield project completely. And yet, we've got 87 there that's, that's heavily trafficked already. And the traffic that we're hoping to move out of our downtown is noxious, offensive and dangerous trucks, heavy trucks. And it's been, it's been an issue since I've been in the community. And I think those trucks have been serving the, the 3M mine in Monterey for 20, 30 years. So, we, now that we've got you as a consistent planner present, an excellent planner, we're back on this as a priority. But I would say that this is, as a priority, has been neglected for a very long time. And I agree with Commissioner Fioco. I think we need to do anything and everything we can to increase the prioritization.
So, one of the things I was gonna ask during the meeting here with, and myself, is to have more communications with DOT. Probably every other month, meetings with DOT to kind of go over projects and wish lists, where things stand. There's not a lack of communication. I just think there could be more communication between the town and DOT when it comes to things like this, or Thompson Street, or other things that are, that come up. I just want us to be more in front of that. And if we can express projects that we want, maybe those, those projects can move up the list or be funded through some other funding source or something. DOT seems to have some way of funding things sometimes if it's a priority project for them and us. Probably not on larger scale, but smaller scale, they can do some updates.
Yeah, I have one question.
Yep.
This 64 business sidewalk to college?
Yep.
I did notice today of the election, several people were walking up that side of the road. Is this money right here, it's one of the small amounts, could it not be used from Powellville?
We would wanna check that, that funding source and make sure that we don't... But yeah, I think it could be if we had the money in, in that account to do that, sure. There's been other funding sources through like the air grant pollution that we just went forward with in the last cycle. We can go that cycle, I think, will be next year. So, there's other funding cycles that we can look into to get at least some of these sidewalk projects.
Mr. Jones, I have a question that's not about the one on the left that you referred to previously regarding the wide sidewalks from downtown all the way up to Northwood.
Right, okay.
Now, what does that stand, as you had indicated there would be...
There's gonna be... Right. And so, that was supposed to happen in April. But there was a, there was a desire by this board and this community to do something different from Lawrence to Powell Place, to have a multi-use path and a sidewalk on one side. And DOT agreed that that was something that they could look at. And they've had their surveyors and their, their consultants out doing work in the last few weeks. And I was told that it would be probably a three or four month delay. So, then it could be the end of the summer that we start rolling something down and let folks see. But we haven't missed anything. It's just they went back to the drawing board. And we will certainly advertise that meeting whenever we, we know it. We think that this will be a better, a more functional cross-section. It may actually impact less progress. So, that's, that was a good thing.
Yes.
We got a good...
Thank you.
Yeah.
What are your questions? Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Do you all want a motion to move forward with those?
Motion to move forward.
Thank you.
Move by Michael C. S. and second by Emily Alden. If you favor, please, don't keep us hanging on.
Right.
That's great.
We'll be standing up if 11 becomes 6.
Mayor, you heard that, right?
I love it. Thank you. Now, under old business, the zoning request from 490 West Street. And Mr. Ray Abell, if you'd be able to come up and discuss.
Thank you, ma'am, ma'am. Dwayne and Christine Howard are proposing to rezone a portion of three separate parcels, totaling approximately 0.537 acres located directly behind 490 West Street from R12 Medium Density Residential to O&amp;I Office and Institutional. These parcels have been zoned R12 since the late 1980s. The future land use plan has this property designated for traditional neighborhood. The surrounding properties are zoned O&amp;I to the south and to the east. The parcels to the north are zoned R12, while the parcels to the west are zoned R12 and C2. A public hearing was held on April 23rd. There were no citizens who chose to speak. However, Commissioner Fioco noted some concerns. Number one, regarding the rezoning of a portion of the parcels. Would the future development be an accessory to the residential use? Or would it be its own principal use? It cannot be an accessory use because by the definition of the ordinance, an accessory use must be located on the same lot in the same zoning district. So, what would happen, what would have to happen is those homes on the R12 portion of the lot would have to go away before a principal use in the O&amp;I section could occur. And that moves on to your second question about access through residential property. By definition, in our ordinance, a parking space is classified as the space for the vehicle as well as the access there, too. So, if they wanted to do something on the back portion of those residential properties, they would have to then zone the front portion, O&amp;I, as well because you can't have a portion of an O&amp;I used running through residential. So, before a site plan would come for you, Jeff and I would request that they have the property rezoned to entirely residential, I mean entirely O&amp;I. And...
Can I just, Victoria, just to translate to a different, well, say in my words, that... With the property rezoned, being still a portion of the lot that is zoned residential prevents access to that portion of the lot that O&amp;I can be used for parking because the parking needs to be on the same lot that is in the same zoning district.
Yes, there would have to be. Parking is, parking in a separate zoning district is not allowed in R12. But again, you can't have, that would be an accessory use to what's on the O&amp;I portion. And you can't have an accessory use that's in a separate district. So, that kind of takes that out.
Okay, great, Paula. Thank you.
And, and I think your last question was regarding Section 3.2 about a main structure on a lot. We would adhere to that. They would only be allowed one principal structure.
Great, thank you.
Uh-huh. The planning board considered this at their meeting on May 7th. The board posed questions regarding access and the compatibility with surrounding uses. The board found that the rezoning was consistent with the future land use plan in a vote of 6 to 0 and recommended approval of the rezoning in a vote of 5 to 1, with one member saying his concerns over possible future use of the property. Staff finds this property to be a suitable location for office and institutional as it is positioned between properties currently zoned for medium density residential, highway commercial and office and institutional. Due to the property's compatibility with surrounding uses and the proposal's consistency with the future land use plan, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request. And the applicants are here. If you have any questions for them.
Questions from the board, Frau Victoria, of course, with the Howards.
Now, even though the future land use plan says it's zoned traditional neighborhood, so, your staff believes it's okay because the fact that it's...
Traditional neighborhood allows for some uses that are not residential but could be compatible with residential.
What would determine if it was compatible, or what are the, what are the criteria? But we don't have...
Guess it would be subjective, rightfully.
I mean, that to me, that's the problem I have is that the traditional neighborhood that is not clearly spelled out what would be allowed and what's not allowed. If we're, if we're just gonna follow what the land, the future land use plan is, that's a traditional neighborhood.
So, rezoning, all the uses that are permitted in the O&amp;I would be allowed. And that's what you would be determining if you approved this to change the zoning. All of the uses that are permitted, and all the uses that are permitted with a specialty permit would by definition be allowed in this area. That's what rezoning is?
Can I ask a question? Your friend?
You gonna ask a question?
Um...
Or am I out of order?
We'll be glad to entertain a question, yes.
Now, ask me.
Yes.
Yeah? Okay, what I don't understand is I'm sitting like behind the justice that, as a matter of fact, if you caused a ditch in my backyard. So, I'm right behind Hardee's because I'm Hardee's.
Wait, I think we might be talking off to different...
Wait, I think we might be talking off to different things.
No, no, no. Yeah, I'll see another piece of property. Oh, yeah. You ready to open the case?
Yes, please. Okay. Christine.
There, indoor Christine Howard, 3034 Circle Pittsburgh. And I just wanted to give a little insight on our intention of what we're trying to do. We built the building in the front here in 2006. This is the current town, this real estate location. And it's on O&amp;I. And this is the bed and breakfast here, which is C-1, O&amp;I behind. And this is, of course, the entire place and convenience store, which is all C-2 and the house that's in tension is at C-2. So we bought 483 and 507 from the Hamlets. And what our intention is, is to recap both of those homes. It's a total of an acre and a half. And to leave these with .49 and .46 and take this back .53. And we're actually, was brought to our attention by Jeff, that we need to do a breeze way to another building. So it's going to be attached, we have our own buildings and having these. I have 30 agents and when I have a company meeting, we can't fit in there. So the intention is to do a breeze way in a building and then have this as just a couple of picnic tables. There's an enormous hackberry tree back here that we want to keep. And this little jet out here is just to, you know, just to keep a buffer between there. But again, this building's going to be closed up this way. All of this will remain, you know, grass and, and these will be as they are. So there'll be no access, plus all the hogging we've done in the way to that. Several houses will look a lot better than they do right now. Does that make sense to everybody?
Well, I think what we just heard from Victoria, that would require a recombination of those rezoned area into your current parcel.
No, there is no change.
Yes.
Yeah, we've got a plan. But we're ready.
Okay.
And we met with Jeff and Victoria several times to find out what the best thing to do. And again, that's why the line is purposely here for the end of O&amp;I and the future land use calls for that to work into this, that this will actually square this off. And that was the whole intention of why, where we chose the line to be, was to make it hopefully acceptable to your next.
Are there questions from the board?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend rezoning.
Do we need a consistent statement for this?
All right, can we have a consistent statement? All right. Make a motion that we approve the consistent statement as written, along with the recommendation for the rezoning.
Is there a second to Jane Farrell's motion?
Second.
A motion by Jane Farrell, second by Beth Wilson Foley. Are there any further questions or is the board ready to vote? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We did one, it's one motion for two, is that permissible?
Yeah.
As opposed.
Just make the minutes reflect that.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure.
We now, under old business approach, the town downtown Overly District, and that is to be held at a public hearing tonight, so...
Public information.
Public information.
Yeah, that's what I was here. So, thank you, Mayor. We are moving forward with our downtown Overly District text amendment that we've been working on the last couple of weeks. And we are drafting that ordinance to establish the Overly District. That's what was given to you all in your packet, was the first draft of that ordinance. Next steps would be to hold the public information meeting tonight, so hear from the public, engage some conversation on the draft ordinance that staff has put together. Then we'll do a formal public, we're asking you all to set a public hearing for the next meeting. It will formally notify everyone in the district, our proposed district, that there's going to be a public hearing at the 29th meeting, along with post signs around the downtown Overly District area. That'll probably happen on Wednesday, so you'll start seeing those. We're going to hold that public hearing on May 29th if you all accept that. And then we'll go to the planning board in June at their meeting.
All right.
And then as early as June the 11th, we could be back to you all for action. But what staff has put together for you is the draft ordinance that would amend our zoning ordinance to add in the 5.9 to our zoning ordinance to create the downtown Overly District. Has a purpose and tenet that was sort of taken from the Main Street folks. Thanks for help on that. And then Victoria really went through and did the eligibility statements and then went through and spelled out what would use could be permitted and what uses were prohibited. So what we did is we threw everything against the law on this first draft of prohibited items or uses. So you all might ponder what those could be. And this is sort of a list that we started with at our special meeting last month. And staff had sort of highlighted some of those uses and we talked about those. So what's prohibited here is what staff shared with you. And we wanted you all to think about this. And it's always easier to retract than to add. So you all, direct staff through communication with the public, either tonight or otherwise at a public hearing. We can always tweak that or give you some interpretation on what that means, what may be explained. So I would have you all sewn it up for public information, hear from the public, and one of the staff can answer any questions that we have.
Jeff, a question for you. So we're adding this section 5.9, or the proposal was to add this.
Yeah.
And just from a structural perspective, I think 5.9.4 should go away.
Okay.
Because I think 5.9.3 talks about permitted uses and then refers us to our table of permitted uses.
Yeah.
Where I think ultimately we will designate, we'd add to the table, this overlay and populate, whether it's allowed or not allowed, to make it just be consistent, I think, with our current ordinance.
Okay, we can do that.
I think it's probably pretty good to have as a list for consideration.
Right.
I think structurally, it would fit better into the table of uses. And I think to be able to make reference to the fact, see the table if you...
Okay.
I have a problem summing up prohibited uses. It would be a good time to talk about that.
I think this is for you all to talk or have the public come up and talk. And it may not be for me to answer, it may be for you all to discuss.
Okay. Well, for starters, theaters in Norwalk or is that, that would imply, I think that that can be a nice addition to downtown, especially if it could be a art theater kind of thing. I'm not opposed to having any rates of home analysis if they're done tastefully or not over, I mean, those might be too big, but certainly nightclub, bars, taverns, I think bars are a good thing to have downtown.
Sure.
I don't have a problem with colleges and universities having like, sound like, like Savannah, for example, has their whole, a whole downtown district, a college of art design. But I don't think that's necessarily bad, like we do. And, you know, with nursing homes, I think about, well, we have one downtown now and it's quite nice that people can walk in and...
So remember the tool that we're using here, is we're trying to encourage, all these things could happen in downtown through a rezoning process.
Okay.
So just because it's on this downtown Overly District, doesn't mean that it couldn't happen.
I see.
It would just go through more public scrutiny to make it happen. Public hearing for a rezoning, a site plan, those things. So I hear you, but understand the, why we're trying to do what we're trying to do.
Okay. It's not written in stone, is this being, you have some control, being on the committee of the...
Right. That's right.
So we want to narrow the list of allowed uses.
I think so.
And those who are not on the allowed use list could still be...
They could.
But would be subject to greater public input and more...
Right. Right. So that's what I've heard.
We can't have this, it's just being...
Yeah, and I think that's a communication that we, you all, to the public tonight and through the public hearing process, you know, Victoria's been fielding a lot of calls since this all started. That's the communication, is that we're not trying to say forever and ever, this can't happen. It's just how do we control when that does happen, or wants to happen? So just remember, that's what we're trying to do.
So in other words, you can be in favor of adding some bars downtown, but you don't want the whole downtown to be bars. And that'd be...
That would be, that could be a correct statement.
Just help me understand. I think you said that there could be a use prohibited in the overlay, or not allowed in the overlay. And one way to get it to be allowed in the overlay is to rezonate these properties.
To a conditional following, I think.
Conditional, huh?
Yeah. Where you're rezoning it to that specific use, that specific building and...
But, gosh. But this document says unless it's permitted in the base, in the overlay, it's not permitted.
Yeah. So you'd be rezoning to some other zoning district.
But then there are issues with that. You have zoning concerns and all that sort of thing, so.
Well, I mean... Right, but even if you rezoned the base...
Right.
You can't rezon the overlay.
Take it out of the overlay.
It's within the court of law.
Exactly. So you can't, you can't, on the rezoned...
Yeah, so these are the challenges with the laws and what we can and can't do and right.
So if the overlay prohibited, nightclub, bars, and taverns.
Yeah.
And I thought, I just thought it was humorous that nightclub, bars, and taverns are not permitted, but the way it's listed says nightclub, parentheses, except for adult entertainment. Bars and taverns are not allowed. So that would mean, although the overlay is allowed.
Right. So, yeah, that would, that was just taken straight from our...
I see more money for that.
You're trying to pressure us on this and you don't, you don't see it.
Well, that would be prohibited. So we need, that, the chart will take care of that.
In farmer's markets, I mean, it's nice, if you're living in a, it's a downtown area and you have like a little farmer's market that people can live downtown, it's, it's people get fresh vegetables. But you're saying, I understand your point.
Yeah.
It'd be something that we could choose to allow.
Well, or it gets a little bit more, we have to kind of work through the mechanism of zoning here. And we really prohibit those items that we never want to see in downtown because it's not in keeping with our character of downtown. So we really tear this list down. And you, either through this amendment or other amendments that come, you add things that says, if you're going to do a fitness center in downtown, it's not only 50,000 square feet, it's going to be something smaller, on a smaller scale that's more appropriate for downtown. That's a whole nother add-on to permitted uses, notes that we would have to get through. But if the goal is to sort of say, okay, take a deep breath, what uses out of this list could we just not want to see in downtown? And there could be a few handfuls of those. Lay that in the draft and then allow these other things. And if we need to have caveats on those in the future, we write those in.
Caveats of just some...
Yeah, yeah.
So, Mr. Jones, to go back to this list of prohibited uses, now, some of those things which are listed here are currently in the downtown Overly District. So could you speak to that for a few moments?
Yeah, so...
Seeing little concern, whereas if they have something there like church, and now church is not allowed in that something.
That's what's written on paper today, might not be what's true.
Right.
But let's say we get to that point where we've got that handful, two, of lists of prohibited uses that we're not going to see in downtown, that we don't want to promote to that downtown. But there's those uses currently operating businesses or churches or what have you, they would become non-conforming uses and continue to stay as long as they're in operation. There could be ways to improve the property if it was damaged to a certain percentage of damage. So there's a complicated way of, the building inspector has to go out and do an appraisal of the structure. And if he or she says, well, it's more than 50% damaged, then that building couldn't be replaced, then the use of that property cannot. But if it was 49% damaged, then the building could be rebuilt and the use could continue on. If a use, if there was no damage to a building and the use was current today and it was prohibited in the future, and that use just went out of business for six months, then you lose your ability to put something else of that same use in that building. So there's a couple of ways to handle that.
What about the sale of the property? Could it be sold if it was used for the same purpose?
I think so, yeah. I think you, the vesting of that zoning, that use goes with the sale. And perpetually could be that use that's prohibited until never it's not. That could be years from now.
But it certainly has a negative impact.
Yeah, I mean, somebody at a loan establishment may look at that as a negative and not want to loan, take it, offer a business loan to someone. But from a town standpoint, it could continue to stay and be as it is.
Mr. Jones, the Section 8.3 that you're talking about, that complicated formula involving the appraisal of the property, is that codified in state law, or is that, is there any flexibility in how we could structure that?
I think we could probably structure that a little bit more clearly. I'm not sure with that particular language, if that's from the general statutes.
It might be general practice.
Yes.
Or the...
I think, I think what we've heard, even as we're looking at as late as our UVO session that we had a couple of weeks back, you know, if we wanted to keep non-conforming uses going beyond the damage clause, and it was 75% damaged or even 100% damaged, but we're okay with that continuing. I think you can write language that says, yes, you can do that. I'm not sure what makes it non-conforming if it can always stay. Yeah. That's, that's...
Well, I suppose it's just a kind of roundabout way of saying no new additional.
Right.
For example, hypothetically, no new additional churches, the churches that are already in operation, continuing as non-conforming uses if we structure the language.
I mean, there's a historic like that, I think it's a church, a bar.
Yes.
And through this process, you may promote churches too.
Whereas gas stations, we might have more stringent, less permissive...
Right.
Non-conforming use policies.
So you would want to, want to maybe pair out some of these prohibited uses to say, I'm okay if you continue to be there and you rebuild forever, and churches. But it's not conforming, we don't, we don't, so what you would be saying is, we do not want a new church in this Overly District. But the ones that are here, you will always forever be a church and you can continue to have the space that you have now. I think what that would, if we wrote it that way, they would not be able to increase their footprint, so that it would be what they have today. That might be a little tricky. And then those uses that are prohibited, and we want to make sure that we sort of over time nudge those ones, you know, maybe not nudge them, but make sure that we don't see them continue, yeah, that's what. You write it as more stringent as maybe the 50% clause or even something more drastic.
So it's conceivable?
I don't know. We'd have to, we'd have to take a look at that. I don't know, we'd have to, we'd have to take a look at that.
I think there are municipalities that have gone from the 50% to 100%.
But if that's universal across the board, I would, I would hate to be I'd hate to be treating one business differently than another.
I think they're coming at it from the point of view of non-conformity, and they're not addressing specific businesses. And others have even gone so far as to say, well, an increase in size of 10% is not an increase in non-conformity. So they give a little wiggle room here and there.
While I'm here, I think we need to look at the non-conformity issues in our zoning ordinance, and try to look at that in the next couple of weeks leading up to the public hearing, because we're gonna need to answer that question a little bit more definitively. But again, this is all the uses that we talked about a few weeks ago, and these may or may not be things that we want to prohibit forever and ever downtown, so.
Do you have the purpose stated?
On, on the screen? No, I don't have it on the screen.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's, you know, it's pretty important foundation upon which we're trying to build the overlay. So I think it'd be really helpful for us to see that, think of, think through that.
Yeah.
Because I think a lot of things you've said, you know, one of the things we talked about doing is having high-density residential. So in high-density residential, what kind of uses support high-density residential? People wanna go, go to church. Bars and taverns.
Right.
So I think when we're thinking about the uses.
So maybe it's, if it's, this stimulates pedestrian, bicycle, those uses that are not, that are auto-centric might be the ones that you want to target. Auto repair, or
Yeah.
Gas station, things like that.
Yeah.
I think that's your key phrase there.
And on that note, one of my specific comments was a line item that read bicycle and motorcycle repair shops. And I think that we could just scratch the word bicycle, keep motorcycles, so compare it prohibited, because then there again, I think that's road, I mean, road vehicle, pedestrian, motorcycle.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. I think we talked about that at our special meeting, that we might want to have a bike shop downtown. That would be something that I can see.
Are we at a point where we're ready to move to hear the speakers? Who signed up?
Go.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Yes.
Julie Kennedy. Julie, up.
I'm Julie Kennedy, and I live at 278 East Hillsborough Street. Y'all have already touched on some of the things that I wanted to mention tonight, but I'd like to start by saying I'm originally from Fayetteville. Fayetteville has had a lot of problems over the years. When the Cross Creek Mall was built in the 70s, it was built outside of town on former cornfields. The businesses downtown died. It became topless bars, drugs, prostitution, crime. And it took Fayetteville probably about 30 years to revitalize that downtown. It's very nice now. They've got lovely restaurants and bars, they have an art theater, but it took an extremely long time to get past that really bad era of crime and just hideous things going on. So I made a little helpful list of things that I think probably shouldn't be downtown. Convenience stores, more gas stations, more car washes, the move of an ABC store, like it's outside of, right outside the downtown, but you wouldn't really want it to move inside of the downtown. Pawn shops, tattoo parlors, computer online gambling places, adult-themed establishments, payday loan, psychics, massage parlors, not to be confused with actual massages. Lots of fringe businesses, rental furniture, fast food places. I think we have plenty of those on the outside of town, and they're not very aesthetic, and they're not tied to the community. Car lots, car repair with accompanying junk yards. Those, that's my big list. And I just wanted to say that I would like to see us to continue to have local businesses downtown, especially retail, so it's not all offices, although of course you need a mix, I think, for a healthy downtown. But we have so little space, and it's so precious, and to keep that downtown revitalized, you're gonna need draws to bring people in to spend money, and that means retail. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
There is a organization in town called Main Street Program?
I know about it.
Would you like to volunteer and participate?
I don't know if I can, but I have, I have those in small little, but I, I might. I mean, I do have like, you know, a background of what not to do. Living downtown, living downtown. That's a positive way.
The next speaker is Linda Jacobs.
Mayor and council, I'm really glad to see you looking at this, although I'm sorry that it took a gas station wanting to go in the middle of downtown to make it do it. Do not get the reputation for being anti-God. Jeff chooses different examples than churches, because if churches want to grow, that's a good thing. A historic district overlay is really important. I have a business at 288 East Street. We are advantage commercial. We also represent the residential side of our company's base. We have been privileged to handle both historic office buildings, historic retail buildings, and mid-century jewels, which this town is full of over the past, I hate to say this, almost 25 years, and continue to do so. So it's important that downtown be protected. But the historic district overlay is more than just about keeping something out. It is about showcasing the downtown. The downtown looks tired. The merchants don't stay open after 6:00. If we have a commercial client in here from out of town, it is very difficult to find someplace nice to take them to eat. If they bring somebody with them, Lord forbid that they want to shop after 6 o'clock, because the streets have rolled up. Have you looked at other towns that have done this successfully? Or a role model? I think we've all admired Apex. Bingo, 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 bingo. Apex has done an excellent job. They have protected their historic retail businesses, they have protected their historic houses, they have protected their mid-century jewels, and they have invited growth, and they have made sure that there was water and sewer to boost that growth that they want on the outer edges. You know, if you want a new car, you go down 64. If you want to go to the, what do you call those parks? See, you can tell I don't have young children anymore. Skateboard. Who said that? Skateboard park. If you want to go to the skateboard park, walk from the restaurant at Pete's Grill, a clock and a half, and take your skateboard and skate. You know, they have an excellent mix. They've done an excellent job. And I would hope that Pittsburgh would also do an excellent job. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jerry Gamble.
Good evening, Mayor Fearing and Commissioners. My name's Jerry Gamble. My business address, 3805 University Drive in Durham. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the owners of 165 East Street, which is the corner of East Street and the Sonic, and to make some comments about the proposed overlay. My client's very concerned about the number of uses that would be prohibited by the overlay district. By my count, there's some, probably 30 reasonable and, and good commercial uses that would be permitted in there. There's probably another 50 or so that should be excluded, but there would be about 30 that would be practically suitable for downtown and East Street location. One of the uses that the, that is to be prohibited, prohibited is shopping center. And according to Ms. Baylet, the definition of shopping center is a multi-tenant building, and we think it would be a mistake to prohibit somebody from building a retail building that has two or more tenants. I mean, it's obvious with my client's property of 1.7 acres, that's large for a lot of businesses, so there easily could be two or more businesses that could go in there in a smaller retail building. Jeff made the comment about the, having the businesses come back, or rezoning, and give special use permit. One of the things I've found in 30 years of real estate is barriers to entry create opportunities for businesses to go elsewhere. So if you want businesses to come in, and not have, I think it'd be a wise move to put more definition on the permitted uses that you want, to define them better, and keep them in the permitted schedule, so that a small business doesn't have to go through 10,000 or 15,000 dollars of rezoning cost. So I would suggest maybe defer the decision on this until you refine the parameters for each one of the businesses that you want to keep. Appreciate your time tonight, and thanks for your, thanks for your overlay district.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mr. Kyle Schiff.
Kyle Schiff, 295 Hillsborough Street. I'm very much in favor of the overlay district, but I think that it, what would be the allowed uses would be, would outweigh the excluded uses. So I think kind of what we've been talking about here, that maybe this should be a list of allowed uses rather than a list of excluded uses. I made a list here of my suggestions of allowed uses, and put the proposed prohibited next to it, and then also put my interpretation of, or recollection of what is currently in the overlay district as well, so I can give this to you. And that's my comment.
Excellent, thank you. Our last speaker signed up, Julie Second.
Hello, I'm Julie Sawkind. I am one of the owners of the old Ford dealership on East Street. And, you know, we bought this property because we liked the character of downtown Pittsburgh. And we bought it in 2005, thinking that we would be able to do something with it in the short term, and it's been really difficult to do that. We're disappointed that we haven't developed it. And so, and so what you want in an overlay district is, is something that's vibrant. I think your 2014 vision statement described what an overlay district should look like. But as Jerry Gamble said, the more prohibited uses, the more daunting it is to somebody to come in and try to, to get a business established. The proposed overlay right now prohibits many of the businesses that drive people downtown, places of worship, theaters, fitness centers, bicycle shops, garden centers and nurseries, bars, microbreweries, and bakeries which bake on the premises. For example, I have some partners in Winston-Salem, and they love to revitalize downtown, where there's an art house movie theater, a bakery that bakes on site, crowded with people drinking coffee and baking bread, and working on their laptops, the wine bars with outdoor seating, microbreweries and restaurants, and the downtown Y. All these, except for the restaurants, can be prohibited as the overlay district is, is stated. And the reality is that a Starbucks, a Dunkin' Donuts, or a Panera's would attract people to downtown, but they would not come without the possibility of drive-up window, which is prohibited under the overlay district. So one of the most puzzling parts of this overlay district, as it applies to our property, is prohibition on shopping centers, which, when we looked at your definition, is several stores on the same property. I don't think you really want us to develop our 1.7 acre property as one store. I see that you have this vision of what's on Hillsborough Street that you'd like to continue on East and West Street. So, you know, you could think about like the Billmore Village in Asheville, where there's a lot of little stores. In, you know, so we need, anyway, we need the possibility of developing multi-business uses. I think that the town envisions something more that's similar to what's on Hillsborough Street. But the reality is, is I look at those stores on Hillsborough Street, they're probably paying a very low rent. And that rent is not going to be enough rent to induce somebody to build of new, new uses. And so, I kind of feel like that, if there's too many barriers, we're gonna continue to be stuck with a vacant property, and not only will we, but the town will be. And I, I know it's not beautiful right now. I know it's something you'd like to see, something else done with. So we, we'd like to advocate for careful, more careful, considerate approach, that fosters development favored by the vision plan. We believe that the current proposed overlay should be tabled, and the concern's focused on the, on the UOP, UDO effort. So anyway, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Can I get some of that issue? Yes, is this your property that you're concerned about?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll call on you first, please. If you'll come to the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
Well, it's obvious I've never been to a meeting before, and I don't know how to address you, I have to say mayor in the court. My concern is, I live
Your name, your address?
I'm from Pecola Temple, and I live at 116 Masanich in Pittsburgh. And that is below Hardee's, and the funeral home, and I'm right behind the Justice Center, like I said. If you can step across that ditch in my backyard, or I'm in your yard. I want, I would like to know how, there's about six families down in that area. I would like to know how does this district overlay affect the property owners in that area? Because I haven't heard anything about the property owners, I've heard about what people like to have, but I haven't, and I, I don't own a business. I only own this two dogs, that's all. But my thing is, is how would this affect us that's down there in that hole? Because that's exactly, it's a hole, but it's a home. It's our community. There's a church there, and we're a family, and the oldest member, she's 103. I'm going on 75. I can't move, I'm, I'm just... So could you explain to me exactly what this means for the property owners that's down there, and, and how does this affect us in the overlay?
Yes, ma'am, I think one of the things that we need to perhaps do is to, is to put you with the planning department so that they can discuss this, to create a link with you.
Okay.
Nobody's going to take your home and turn it into a business.
Okay.
Nobody's going to take you and turn it into a business. Your community is very well respected, the Mount Sinai Church there is very well respected. And I think that you can be assured that nobody's going to, you know, certainly you could sell under this provision, and it could become a business at some point, but nobody is going to force you to do that. So are there other members of the board that would like to address that as an issue?
Yeah, I don't think this is about residential at all. This is just controlling, trying to make our downtown dining space a bit shorter, and giving the town more say about the businesses that come to our precious downtown.
Okay. I just didn't understand, I was trying to get an understanding. Like I said, this is my first meeting.
It's really great for people to live near the downtown, because you're the ones that keep our downtown vibrant. So we are thrilled that you live near the downtown, because I know you're shopping in downtown.
Yeah, I did.
You know, shopping at the grocery store there. So that's a really important part of downtown, it's not a downtown unless you've got people, the businesses aren't there if you don't have the people. So we're glad you're there.
Okay, thank you.
For sure. Definitely, we want residential. That's really important, really, really.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you for coming.
And can you give me your last name again, Natalia?
H E M P L E.
Thanks, ma'am.
S P E C O L I A.
There's my card.
P E T U O L I A.
Okay. Thank you. Lady in the red shirt, would you like to speak? So give me your name and address, please.
My name is Judy Lustler, 97 Plantation Drive, Pittsburgh Road. Okay, I just want a plea for clarity. You have several tables that you give us. You have the downtown use table, in which there's X's for permitted by right, and S for permitted by special use only, and then there's blank, which probably means not permitted at all. Is that correct?
I'd have to see what table.
The table that you put up for the public to look at.
That's our permitted use table.
Right. So if it's blank, is that not permitted?
Yeah, that's currently how it is.
Okay. And then you have this other list of things that are going to be not permitted. And I have not yet had the time, but it would be a very difficult task for members of the public to go through and track that. And so I suggest that you combine these tables, or provide us some way that we can understand without looking up each line. And just from glancing at it, it looks like the names are also not consistent. So that if you could make the names, you provided on the web a downtown overlay district with a list of uses. Those use names, as far as I can tell, do not exactly correspond to the use names in your table. So it's very difficult to know what you're talking about. And so that's just a request for more information before we have the public hearing. The other thing is your map and the colors of the use. I mean, this is good for you guys, because you know and you think about this all the time. But for a member of public to come in, we don't know what C4 means, or M1 means, or whatever. And so just some sort of information so that when people come to the public hearing, they can be informed. And then, so that was just my basic thing for request for more information. And then I do have one comment, where you talked about, Mr. Lemon over here, mentioned that you wouldn't require it as long as it's set in the same footprint. You need to think about somebody who wants to build ten stories in the same footprint, and you might want to have some idea about whether that would be possible or not.
Yeah. High dedication, high... Thank you.
Someone else can raise their hand.
Yes, that's her.
Yes, my client. John Ford, please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Greg. We haven't seen each other in a while. Basically, I'm Greg Stafford, sorry, and I do not live in Pittsburgh. I have some property in Pittsburgh. And basically, I've come to support an overlay district of some sort. I don't know about the list, and I understand it's the formative stages. I'd like to express a little bit of sympathy with the lady who came about Masonic Street and East Street, in that I have been in the formative stages of starting to develop some property that I have. And so when I first spoke with Taylor Hobbs about developing it, some of it was rebuilding things in place. And by the time one of the 2,000 square foot buildings I have would be demolished and replaced, he was coming up with a number around a million dollars in downtown Pittsburgh. There is zero chance that I could ever rent that place out, so I'm being forced then to renovate. And if I'm changing, I need to have a trust with the town board, which, you know, we've only, I've only been here twice, because I don't do politics. But so far, I do, and I think that the trust is important with the people moving businesses here, and trying to move businesses here, to understand the other side, which is if we're going to put massive amounts of money into the areas in downtown, we have to feel like there'll be understanding of the barriers we face, which is creating rents, which in Pittsburgh right now are $10 to $15 a square foot on a good day, and do it in a way that will allow businesses to be down here and pay a rent they can afford, while we have the gigantic development going on next door, which is charging more than twice that per square foot. And how do we fit that in? And I think making this list one that I can trust when I come here and say, look, I'm not putting in a massage parlor, it's a therapist. That kind of thing, as long as we're confident in the goodwill that no one's putting their foot down, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this, we'll be okay. And so I guess I'm just encouraging the trust that, at least in my two meetings, I believe is well earned, and hope that it continues as we move downtown. You'll be seeing it later, anyway. But that's it.
And Greg, give me your address, please.
901 Jordan Hills, and that's Chapel Hill. Thank you. Thank you.
Another challenge? Liz, did you want to speak? We need to move forward.
Liz Collington, Rocky Hills Road, Pittsburgh. I looked at what was in the agenda package. I don't know whether other people will have questions about this, but I had a question about what if you have a tract that sits on where that quarter-mile circle is around the courthouse? And some of the tracts that were in the second map were actually quite big. And if, when this ordinance is passed, for instance, if that's the map that's attached, then that downtown district would kind of like go all the way down south of Orton, I think, I can't remember, because there's something tracks the land. Anyway, so I had a question about that, and about, well, where the land is outside the black circle of the quarter mile, would any uses that are going to be not allowed in the downtown overlay district be allowed if it's on the property that's outside the circle? And the proposed text answered that question for me, and I thought that was maybe something that would need to be more...
We'll try to get that answer before the public hearing.
I think we did touch on that in a discussion. We, I think, the planner mentioned, asked us if we would want to draw a circle, a distinct circle, or whether it could just count if some of the properties within it, and whether or not it counts for some of these properties, which is what we said. Of course, that's open to discussion, but that's what we determined.
Yeah, I think that's the present proposal, that it's a circle, not a property. Anyway, shape or form the entire property. And you're pointing out, yeah, some of those properties are quite large, and so they...
I think it'd be self-divided.
Rather than just building outside the circle.
Thank you.
One more. Let's just do one more in secret. We'll have another opportunity to get this when we have the public hearing.
Chapel Niagara, 514 May Farm Road. I also own a business on 1015 Tompkins Street. My concern, I love the idea of having a vision for our town, as I do, I think, most everybody in this room, as well as in this town do, that's why we live here. I have a very big issue with there being a constrictive special permit, use permit issue. I mean, I recall when the school tried to go downtown, how many different hearings, you know, that they had to go through, only to be denied. So schools was one of those things that was mentioned as a prohibitive use.
I could just interrupt. The school was approved.
Huh.
It was approved.
It was?
Yeah.
When the school was...
Yeah.
Okay.
They chose not to.
They chose not to, okay. I do remember the difficulty, so thank you for correcting me on that.
It was a special use permit, that's why it was...
Right. And I understand as a small business owner, and many other small business owners, most of us don't want to go through a special use permit such as that. So if you're going to get somebody that's going to go in, that's going to be consistent with the small business atmosphere that you want to have downtown, they will not go through the special use permit process. Okay. Thank you.
Considering the size of our agenda, I think we really need to... There'll be other opportunities for input?
I just had a question.
Yes.
If the public input session is in a couple weeks, is the intention that people can just email staff between then and then to get the input? I mean, what, from this point to the public hearing, what's kind of the town's process so people, so the public can engage? What was the thing?
Obviously, they can call us and talk to us, but how are you having to do that?
You can always write to the commissioners at any time.
Sure. I would encourage that.
But I think Mr. Boll's point is, what is on the table for the public hearing? What is it you all are going to consider and invite public input on in particular? It's going to be difficult for you to be more restrictive after the public hearing, so you can be less restrictive. You can narrow the size of this circle, you can take things off the list, it's going to be hard to put things on the list. So you probably need to have some decision about what it is you're going to send to a public hearing. And it could be the draft that you have.
And we've made it live. We included a lot of uses so you could back those off. We didn't want to start off with five uses and then hold a public hearing on those five uses, then you would be able to take those off. So it could be, y'all can settle up, but similar to what we already have.
So let me understand the limitations you're speaking of, about putting uses on or taking them off.
You have to re-advertise, have a notebook here, if you want to add to the list of prohibited uses after the public hearing.
So the public hearing, I would think must be as is?
It's a text of amendment.
Or denied?
Sure, it's a text of amendment.
Okay. And so if we want to make additional changes after that, we'll just have to, we could keep the public hearing?
But you still have to notify the people that you're, so you might as well have another public hearing. You can take things off without any problem. You can't add things to, in terms of prohibition, without notifying.
So Madam Mayor, I appreciate Mr. Mess's answers. We just want to know if we're going to inform folks to contact you through Main Street Pittsburgh, or other folks here, what we should say, and if the website, the town's website will be updated, or what we should communicate to make sure it's clear. That's all.
I'd like to add a couple of items to a list of prohibited uses, but then we've also had this conversation about, maybe we should phrase it as a list of prohibited uses. I don't quite have resolved that, but...
Well, I think it'd be very good if we used our current table of permitted uses, added the category for the overlay, and used that to communicate the permitted uses or uses that are not permitted.
Do you think that that would address the question or concern about clarity for the publics?
Well, I heard that Mrs. Lustler, who indicated that she had some confusion, that the language here didn't match exactly what was on the use table, that would eliminate that confusion right there by using the exact same table. And if we are truly going to be, let's say, at the public hearing, voting on the text amendment, it should be the form that we are adopting. So, you know, we're talking about doing it that way.
But the concept of the overlay is that all the uses that are within the circle are allowed, except what you prohibit. I mean, that's the way that...
That's sort of how we run it without the charge, is that everything's allowed in that base selling district, and that that's the permitted use table, and this is something else.
But this document says it's allowed if it's permitted in... So...
So everything is permitted in the overlay, except what you prohibit?
Right.
Everything that's permitted in the base selling.
Is allowed.
Underneath the overlay.
Except what you prohibit.
Except what you prohibit.
So the prohibition is the important thing.
And then the prohibition would then not be allowed in a special use procedure?
Right.
Regardless, whether it's a right or special use. It's just flat-out prohibited.
So I believe you'll start with this larger list, and you'll probably pare this down, the things that you're okay with. That's why we put everything against the wall, and we'll pare it down later.
So if we're going to advertise for a public hearing, you're saying we can remove items from the list that are stated as prohibited?
Yes.
During the course of the public hearing? But we can't add to the prohibited uses?
If you add to, you've got to have another public hearing, another notebook.
So then the table is not a use, this list of prohibited uses is key?
Either that and the map. You've got the two together. So it may be that some of this is appropriate for C4, and may not be appropriate for R12 south of Hardee's. So you've got to look at all of that, both of them. So it's the map and the list.
Yeah. So if there is a selling designation of C4, and game rooms are permitted in C4, and this is within the overlay, if we are silent on prohibiting game rooms, it's allowed?
Yep.
Okay.
Assuming we can define a game room.
Well, lots of questions about what uses are. Small repair, small item repair?
That's why you have a planning director.
Small item repair.
Interpretation.
That's opposed to big...
Yeah.
His pump on his spray is a small item. His backhoe is probably not.
How do we judge large and small?
He does.
Relative to what?
He does. That's his job.
Is it a large one or a small one?
That's his job. That's why you pay him. You don't want to have to do that. I don't think.
Are we ready to move on, ma'am? Would it be helpful to have a work session, Jeff Jones?
I think we go now in the public hearing.
How long a debate does the text have to be in order to establish the public hearing?
I have to get legal ad to Alex tomorrow at 10:00.
Yeah, we'll be on that first thing in the morning.
For publication, this week's basis?
The legal ad won't contain the text of the...
No, but it says the text is fixed. You can't change the text after you advertise.
Okay.
So you could, if you want to do this in two weeks, you either do this tonight, or you put it off.
All right. I will move that we add to the list of prohibited uses pawn shops and gun shops.
What about bakers cigarettes?
Yes, that's our one. Tobacco and vaping shops? Or anything that is a nicotine delivery system? Apparently, there's a new concept in nicotine delivery system.
So we got, we're adding to this prohibited list. Pawn shops, gun shops, armed hands, tobacco, nicotine, vaping. We'll have to do a quick word smithing of that.
What about street sticks and nicotine? There are these partners that entertain people.
Like some of gaming operations.
There we go.
Well, I think I've got a list of things I'd like removed from the prohibited table.
Do you want to do that now or before the public hearing and the planning board? You can do it up until you vote.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. I-
It may be that we pare this down quite a bit.
Yeah. Well, I just, it's tough for people to understand that this isn't serious.
Yeah.
When they, I mean, honestly, shopping center is a use that we want in downtown.
Yeah, especially if you have top to power buildings, retail, law, and you're just loving what that is.
I mean, what was described for East and Sunday is that were a little shopping complex, it'd be heck a lot better than what we think is happening. Yeah. Is there, is there better language defining a motor focused, motor vehicle focused shopping center versus one that is mixed use dense walkable? Could we call that retail center? Do other municipalities do that?
There, there, there's definitely other ways to term, to define retail centers or integrated centers.
Or complex.
Yeah.
Mixed use complex.
We don't want a strip shopping center.
Right. Which I think, well, shopping center, a plump, it sort of implies.
Right.
Shopping center to me is about bypass.
But if someone's thinking of starting a good year here, like that we're talking about, if they read that, they might take that to mean, oh, this is not allowed here. I just think we need to think about language that would include prohibited.
So the shopping center one is to try to get around the one building per lot. Shopping center though, it probably should be renamed to something else, to be honest. And we could, I mean, I think through this discussion, you're going to remove that use. And it's also done. But at some point in time, we probably will want to redefine what shopping center is and what a retail center or integrated center is or something. Level of the center.
Maybe that item should be removed from this list so that we leave open the opportunity to define it more carefully in the next iteration.
Next iteration of-
In a deliberative process, either in the EEO or-
Yeah, I mean, y'all could go through that exercise, if y'all want to.
I mean, we do have to think about, I think, ones that would just really cause people to think, like churches, it's such an outrage, it might not be worth having help with.
My only thinking about that is that I think that, you know, in my experience in Wilmington, I recall thirty years ago, we had conversations about how the concentration, the number of churches in Wilmington downtown area at that time compared the city's ability to leverage tax dollars to install the kind of infrastructure that needed to transition to a tourist economy.
I understand.
And so it's nothing against churches, it's the idea that we don't need additive churches.
I totally understand. I'm just making, I was here when, you know, the school was shut up, and we were quickly labeled anti-God, and it was a couple of other cases. You know, we were looking at things for economic, and for keeping the downtown, you know, vibrant. So I'm just expressly concerned about how some of the churches have-
There may be parking requirements for churches that would probably militate against downtown location anyway. So you've got to, there's more than one way to look at this. It's not just the use, there are all sorts of ancillary requirements as well.
Same for the parking requirement.
But why would a church not have parking?
Because they need a space.
There are lots of places downtown that have churches and their congregations have food outside and-
That's churches. I don't have, you know, personally, I don't have a feeling, I'm just, based on my experience, there could be backlash.
And I think there are going to be a number of questions about the use of, we already passed on, the majority of that. That's what we're supposed to be doing, including those questions, you're also in those questions through this process. But at the end of the day, we, you know, you will make the decisions that will probably pare this list down. We encourage people to come to the public meetings, the public hearings, planning boards, pocket things as much to them as it should, and they will come to all meetings to make sure that the message is heard.
You say so shooting galleries, you know, that kind of thing? Did anybody try to come down there?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
There are things like retail uses not listed, and those are, those are, so what I would do is, in that case, if it was not specifically listed in the ordinance, I would see if that use that they proposed is similar to a permitted use, and then I would most likely frame it permit for. If it was wholly different, that anything was permitted, like the shooting gallery, that would not be something that would be allowed, even if it's silent and, you know. It's what, I should say, a lot of interpretation work.
Do we need to add crematoriums to this, or are we resolving that in a different way?
We're resolving that when that's-
The one-
Just agenda.
Yeah. Set the public hearing earlier than that.
And we need doors that you can take out that we wouldn't want?
I did think of shooting, a shooting gallery, but a lot of it's not done.
Yeah. Do we need to justify that, that, you know, multi-story building that's first door to be retail and the second floor not to be, obviously institutional or residential?
Well, that was, that's a use that we did include, but we talked about it at our special meeting, about how we want to encourage residential or commercial. And that is not part of this process, because what we're trying to do is prohibit, the goal here is to figure out what we want to prohibit. And I've talked before, I think that's another, and then that we'll have to kind of rupture. I wish we could, just for timing, and we'll get on that hopefully through the UEO process or another process.
Do you all?
I have added to the list pawn shops, gun shops, tobacco, vape shops, shooting galleries. Anything else?
Oh, we got, we got the electronic gambling, that's clear.
We'll say that there were a couple of shops here in town that were selling like glass bombs and pipes and stuff like that.
No shop.
Not necessarily for tobacco.
Right. I may call, no shop.
We'll, we'll try to find it, we'll find a use.
Something, something terrifying.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Now we're going to additional elements, public facilities.
Okay, Mayor. Members of the board.
We need a motion to suspend the public hearing for the twenty-
Oh, you do, yes, for twenty ninth, yes.
Make a motion to suspend the public hearing for the twenty ninth.
Second.
Motion by Michael Seager, seconded by John Bullock, so it's a decision to get my side.
Aye, aye.
Vote.
Thank you, Board. So that's Tuesday. All right. We'll get going here. So tonight, tonight, Chatham Park wants to continue their discussion on public facilities, important, most importantly, the schools portion. The schools was represented last, at the last meeting, and there was some interaction between the board and the school and Chatham Park, and there's just some things that they'd like to follow up on, on that portion of public facility. I did want to let you all know that we have received the stormer comments from hydrostructures and staff, and Chatham Park going through those as we speak, and potentially could be here on the twenty ninth, or it could be in June, just depends on how we, how quickly we get through those comments. So I'll turn it over to Chatham Park and to the board, and they can have a conversation on public facilities and schools. Thank you.
I just want to connect those comments about sewer reservation for schools, some language that conceptually addresses the issue, that's if that kind of goes in direction. So I think the issue that Mr. Piake brought up last meeting was to, with the, with this gift of school sex, that we should also be providing an allocation of sewer for those schools. And so what we have proposed here is that with every sewer allocation request that would come in with a neighborhood, that we would also include a portion of the school's requirement per the number of students generated by that neighborhood. If that makes sense. And so we've given language in there that talks about the calculation, but then I think the example might be a little bit easy to follow, but it describes using, based on a certain, an exact number of dwelling units. But then from that, we took the numbers that the school board consultant has established for single-family units, multifamily units, and so forth. And some of those numbers are also broken out, depending on how many bedrooms are in house, say, three units, three bedrooms and less, assumes, what do I have, point four or five students per household, and greater than three bedrooms would be point seven students per household. That is their number, that's not our number, and that's the number that had been included in the agreement with the school system and is presently in the elements. Then we've also used their numbers for the capacity of an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school. And when you do that math, that leads you to a number of gallons that would have been required based on the students generated by that neighborhood. Setting it aside for that point in time when there's a school to be built. So that's the, that's the idea.
So in essence, that will prevent there from ever being a shortfall on sewage allocation, regardless of where you are in scheme of building schools?
Yes, and I would also, I don't, you know, I think this is the last time in Pittsburgh, obviously, I guarantee that, no, I don't control this, but I think it's the last time in Pittsburgh's history where you're going to be bumping up your sewer capacity, threshold like you are right now, or any of us will be, because we're going to be looking out in further in advance and trying to address things as we are right now, with the amount of money that's being spilled, spent on sewer infrastructure. Once for the sake, I don't, I don't know that we'll ever be this, this close to being against the end of our sewer, but it is trying to establish a process for making sure that that sewer exists for those schools.
Any questions, comments? Does this resolve your question, Michael Piake?
Well, what I had originally envisioned was that there would be a school, in that it would have a certain sewer demand. And the idea was, when that school was located in Chatham Park, that that sewer capacity be reserved from Chatham Park's sewer allocation. This is a little bit different, because I did not consider students, eight hundred and fifty students for a middle school was what the school board thinks they can do. If that school was in Chatham Park, they were reserving enough sewer for eight hundred and fifty kids, or students. Just, and students, faculty, everybody, it's just, that's the way it's measured for students. And I think what this proposal is saying is, the students that are generated within Chatham Park come with the reservation. So the fact that eight hundred and fifty students are unlikely to come from Chatham Park, but to come from other portions of Pittsburgh, I think Chatham Park is saying, we're going to cover our proportional share of the students that are in that school. Is that a number fact?
Sounds fair to me.
But is it, I mean, is that-
Yeah, I mean, we're, because, for example, in this, in this, well, in this example we give, with five hundred and eighty-nine residential units, if we never built another residential unit beyond that in Chatham Park, I'm not sure that, well, for three hundred and eight students, a school isn't needed yet, and we're not generating the need for that school, it's going to be coming from somewhere else in Pittsburgh.
And so the idea is, those other students will bring along their allocation of sewer from the town.
From what's we have to tell?
It's our town. Exactly. But when we're talking about these allocations for just this, mostly two million gallons, we are dividing between Chatham Park and, like, the middle of the town. But yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's consistent with the way you laid out that agreement. I mean, we've got a certain part we're responsible for, you've got a certain part you're responsible for. We're responsible for the students that our developer is generating, and you're responsible for the students that your other developer is generating.
The board settled on this particular issue?
Mayor, I guess I have a question. I was here last time, and to the bottom line, Michael, if their sewer, this sewer allocation is not coming from the town, correct? They're-
Okay. For each student that they create a need for a school, each student has its own allocation associated. And that student is from within Chatham Park, it comes out of a one point two five million allocation, or actually, it includes the four hundred and ninety-nine thousand. If a student comes from without Chatham Park, then that student has to get an allocation from the allocation controlled by the town.
Or the developer is bringing in those students?
Yes.
Which is kind of what seems to me a fair, I mean-
Right, but the developer is either within or without Chatham Park.
Right, what I'm saying is, the developer, with Powell Place, for example, if they're, as part of their sewer allocation request, they would be- they, as part of their sewer allocation request, they would be covering their students as well.
Right.
You can easily run numbers and have it verified and say, this is what, does it just say that this type of development, the support of the school system, and present that information to the applicant and to you all, and, um, modify their request, or what have you, to allocate such students.
You know, I think we could initially base it on this org, which I think comes from O R E D.
Right, right.
And that has the org changes.
Right. Over the years, and I'm sure they'll come up with another form.
But it, it also, the proportion where it's assigning the number of gallons per student comes from, as you said, the North Carolina Administrative Code.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Farrell, I was stepping on your words too, I apologize.
Well, I was just curious as to how it's going to be kept up with, if the student lives in Chatham, what about a student that's just right outside of Chatham Park, they not going to be allowed to go to Chatham Park's school?
No, this doesn't have anything to do with where, where they go to school.
How are you going to keep up with the student being charged to your allocation versus town's allocation?
It's not, you're going to charge the, after total allocation, when a school comes in and wants to be connected, it'll have X number of students, 850 or whatever it is, and they'll need X number of gallons of capacity. There will be, uh, whatever proportion of those that are Chatham Park in development, you'll have some kind of dibs on so many gallons of Chatham Park capacity. The rest of it will have to come out of the town's capacity. But yes, somebody has to keep up with it, that's for sure.
Well, and the allocation of sewer, I mean, we're talking about residential units, is all based on bedrooms. And bedrooms are generating the number of students, so it'll be, it won't be difficult to track.
In White County, I'm sorry, White County's from?
Yeah.
Yeah. For the longest time, when White County was trying to control how many schools they were building, I mean, there were a lot of calculations that were being included in development plans to show the number of students that your project was generating, so that everyone, both on the school side and the town side, could be tracking the impacts from the number of school kids that were coming. It's just another one of those measures.
But the kids will be here before the schools are, and that's just the way it was.
Well, I think the structure makes sense. Obviously, just looking at the first time, the opportunity to do some math, I think the structure is logical and makes sense at the point. So from my perspective, my request to reserve capacity for schools within Chatham Park's allocation, I think is probably, I guess, more.
Wasn't there another issue, Mr. Fiocca, about the, um, what site is chosen for a school?
Oh, yeah.
I remember that that was another.
It is.
Question that you had with respect to our last meeting.
Right, and I, and I, it is not resolved. Chris Blythe did reach out back to me, and we've had a further conversation, so he's still trying to get, um, his legal team to speak on that.
And that was the provision whereby there was a period of time after which a site was chosen, that the site could be substituted out by Chatham Park, is that right?
Yes, and the language that is used in that, there's a thing called the commitment period. Yeah, commitment period is four and a half years. And the way that the school board makes the commitment to Chatham Park is stated to be a development plan. Throughout many of our additional elements, the phrase "development plan" has meant an official site plan or subdivision plan submitted to the town. And my concern is that on a school site, that would be hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in design to the standards of a development plan, only to possibly have the site unilaterally moved. And I wanted to guard against that. I doubt that anyone intends to do that, but I want to guard against that, and so it may be as simple as redefining what a development plan is for this specific purpose, and/or some other way of clarifying what a commitment is. So that's my concern. And I think Chris is sort of working on it, and I don't know if you guys have thought about how it worked on at all.
Well, we've talked, we've talked about it a great deal, and went through a number of iterations, and they were happy with where, and they voted on accepting that. So I don't, I don't know, from our standpoint, I don't know what else to do, because their board has voted on that language, and it's, and they have determined that it's appropriate.
But this was a concern that came up at this board, following the approval by the school board.
I understand, but you're just kind of worrying, you're worrying for them, but, yeah, and they're saying, we're okay.
What are you saying?
You're saying, if they say they're okay, I think that they're okay. But, I mean, we went through a lot of, um, you know, you just don't show up one day with, with a development plan, and.
Right.
Uh, we have, as we've been, Vanessa just came from a school board meeting, she's there every month, we meet with them quarterly at least, we meet with them very regularly so that they know how many students, how many homes we're ringing online. And so that, and that time, and, and so also, we're talking to them about, we've given them schedules on, we're extending utilities when we're building roads in the area of the schools, and where the schools are proposed, and things like that. So, I don't, I don't, we're, we're, we're all working together, um, as closely as we can, to give enough of a lead time on everything that's happening. Everything's going to be happening here pretty quickly, relatively speaking. So I, I, we, and I think Dr. Jordan said this last meeting, he thinks, and their consultant told us this in the meeting, he, he says, we are working together above any other development example he's ever seen, and he's working across the state. So I just don't know what else to do, they may, you know, you may, after talking to them, they may propose something differently, but they have signed the agreement, voted on it, that's all we can do.
You know, now that you say it, maybe it would really be helpful for us to have an understanding of where, where we are in this process, you know, um, because I understand that you sped up some of the residential development plans, to move them ahead, to create more rooftops for attracting food commercial and all those kinds of things. Would it be useful for the board to know, say, what a five or seven year plan was, as far as, um, providing for these comfort facilities, to know what it is that you're proposing in the next short while?
Well, I think you're asking the board, but I think it's a great idea. And we, we could give you a very detailed plan year by year of what we have on the books right now. I think it would give, and I know Mr. Bottis has been concerned about this even beyond, he certainly can, all of you are concerned beyond seven years. We can only look so far out of our crystal ball and the detail that we've got for the next seven years, but we've got some pretty good detail for the next seven years. And as you said, uh, we, we've got a good bit of non-residentialist, that's come online and is getting ready to be submitted to come online, but we've had many examples where non-residential developers want to see rooftops. And so we need to be providing this, and so we're starting that really this month.
Approved a number of things on Thompson Street, so, so that's moving forward next?
That's moving forward. And I think you've all heard the example, you know, Broad Chapel's got maybe two years left, they've been selling 300 to 350 homes a year. So those 300 to 350 home buyers are coming to Chatham County looking for homes. And so we aren't trying to come, uh, out with 50 lots or 100 lots, we're trying to come out with hundreds, hundreds of lots to take on that demand. And, back to your original question, I, I think it would be very informative for all of you to see, and not only, well, that, that we break it out, um, year by year and phase by phase, and location by location, that would show you exactly what this plan is.
Could that kind of thing be presented to, as say, at the next meeting, especially if we came and did a six o'clock, um.
Six o'clock work session?
Six o'clock work session, was that?
Maybe 2:00 A.M.
Is that something?
We're, we're finally, if you are.
Is that person using, or is there?
I don't know, it's working late, but, no, that would be fine, then we can also look at where a police and fire fits into that as well.
Yeah, that may help, help that conversation.
All right, well, let's, let's plan to do that, is there anything that folks want to bring up, like? Yeah, because. Is there anything we want to sort of, um, tee up for, for discussion that will link into that for public facilities?
I'm not on board with you on that page.
Thank you.
And I'll make sure, and Mr. Farrell wants to make sure we talk about fires, is that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry.
When I do mean that, that's also our first responders that's going to be the first ones coming to you, has calls that need them at night and all that, yeah. Rescue squad, all that.
And is it, is it?
Our first help desk, yeah.
Does it use, do we have a fire marshal here, is that, or the head of the fire department, or what, is there anybody else who needs that informational meeting?
At 6:00, just up today. Yeah, I mean, I could have my chief.
Chief has been in good communication with you about?
We try to be, and, and I, Mr. Odom, our engineer meets, uh, he meets regularly with them keeping them informed, and them keeping us informed too.
We're at a point now where we have, um, four elements left, and, um, I think sometimes we sort of have a tendency to lose our momentum, wondering if we could make a sort of renewed commitment to try to, I mean, we're going to have stormwater next time, um, I guess, potentially. Um, and we've still got tree protection and, of course, housing. So, and this is, and of course, we only have one meeting in July, so, um.
You mean with housing, what has been progress with your ad hoc committee?
Uh, I'll tell you, we've had regular meetings, and we've had some pretty good, robust conversations, and, um, every member who has attended, the first meeting has attended every single meeting. Uh, oh, except for Jerry, one time he was out of town, but, uh, everyone is showing up, everyone is prepared. Uh, I think we're making pretty good progress. In fact, I think we are going to ask this board to allocate some funds, so we can get some assistance from Triangle J. Uh, they've got some very talented people, um, on staff, who've come and helped us with one session. And we have formed an idea that we want to present to them and help, have them help us flesh it out. I don't know, it's an approach that I've heard of or seen anywhere else, there, it's always got components of it that are in other jurisdictions, but, um, so we want to explore that, and I think we're making good progress, so I'm happy to report good work. Everyone's showing up, putting in the time, coming up with some pretty good ideas, and I think Jim asks to really do a good job of being the chair, and keeping things moving, and keeping people informed, so.
I have to just back, back it back, it's absolute, it's going to break, break.
Mr. Moll, can you speak to, like, do you feel like this is compatible with what the authorities thought they were?
It is, it's compatible, and I think in some ways we have exceeded that. Yes, because they're going in a different direction. So I think we've exceeded that, but I think we can get more expertise with Triangle J, with his planner, and the senior planner there, who is Ashman in America, who can get those and work with the workers out, and they can get to the point that we can look at different ideas, combine those ideas, and they have great ideas about different ways of, you know, working out the different policies, how you're going to be able to do that. And when they come, um, as Michael has said, we'll ask for some additional funds to take care of their, you know, their fees and everything, but it's, it's going to, when Chatham Park is there, it's going very well.
And then we do have a goal of putting a package together in the not-too-distant future, so that's why I think we really need some help.
What's your time to discuss with Chatham Park?
Months, not years.
For all, for all.
I appreciate that, yeah, it's worth it.
And have you been discussing revenues, Bertie?
Yes.
We have.
Yep. They're, they're, they're closing meetings.
Up there, it's, it's.
Some result, that's the get going.
Well, let's skip the end on the big screen.
It's after bedtime, I might be able to participate in the class.
Good, thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
All right, um, is there, is any thought towards a break, or are we going to be willing to persevere through here? Um, I'm, the next thing on the agenda is, um, the performance review documents, and I am sorry to report that I have not had a chance to bring those along any further, so we'll have to put them off for the next meeting. So the wastewater agreement would be the next agenda item, Paul Miller and Ryan Dusick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, you have in your packet, uh, four different versions of agreements for two different, uh, two different, uh, agreement areas, one being the wastewater facility that's, um, in process from, uh, the Chatham Park building side, the Illinois State facility. Uh, one agreement was crafted by, Mr. Messick, my agreement was crafted by, uh, Mr. Eagle, legal counsel for Chatham Park Investors. Um, there's red and blue lines in each version. Likewise, on the Sanford Porstman side, um, with regard to the financial guarantee agreement, same thing, same difference, there's one agreement by each attorney, red and blue line there. Um, that's the result of numerous meetings between, uh, between staff, legal counsel, that could be brought in, and then put in, uh, a couple of board members as well, which is very helpful, so, uh, with that, I would turn it over, for the moment, to, uh, to Mr. Messick, to review the documents and, um, you know, provide an overview of where we're at, what we're looking for.
If I could address the, um, the agreement with Chatham Park with regard to the financial guarantee matter, that, that's one that's been talked about in the past, and, and is the longest standing. And I hope you don't get too terribly concerned about all the red lines and the blue lines. I think that since you last discussed this, we made considerable progress in, with respect to a couple of issues that I'd like to just, uh, bring to your attention. The biggest point, I think, before was the Sanford capacity charge that was required by the town of Sanford when we adopted that, um, agreement in March a year ago. Um, since then, it's my understanding that that fee has been established, and it's approximately $6.9 million. That is to be paid to Sanford over the course of 25 years, the exact payment schedule is to be determined, but Sanford. The exact payment schedule is to be determined, but Sanford has promised to be cooperative, and we have talked in the past about establishing a schedule that would be comparable to the projected flow amounts from Pittsboro to Sanford, so that it presumably would be lower at the beginning of the 25-year term and increase gradually as the flows to the Sanford facility were to increase. You all were concerned about possible shortfalls in the payment of whatever the agreement required to be paid to Sanford, and we've had some general discussions about that, and even more than general, fairly specific and even very detailed discussions about that. Mr. Eagle's draft and mine, on this one, mine was first and his was second, pretty much say the same things about that. And the essence of it is that Chatham Park has agreed to pay 25% of the Sanford capacity fee, which if it were a total of $6.9 million, their share would be 1.725 million dollars, I believe. That would be paid over a period of 10 years, and they've agreed to do that, and of course it would be a shorter term than the town possibly would pay, would pay the balance of it. The balance of the, of the Sanford capacity charge would be ostensibly paid by the user fees that you would charge your customers and as a part of the component of the monthly fee that would be collected each month from the users. The issue became then, depending on the payment schedule and the amount of flow, whether there would be any shortfall in the required payment from the user fees, or whether there would be a surplus that would be received. And this draft agreement provides for various scenarios, whether or not the user fees were either less than 50% of the balance of the capacity charge, more than 50%, but less than 100%, or more than 100% of the capacity charge. All this essentially says is that if the user charges are less than half of the required payment amount to Sanford, the town would pick up the difference, and that would be a town shortfall between the amount collected and the 50%. Chatham Park would pay the other 50%. If that was, the user charges were more than 50%, but less than 100%, the difference between the amount collected and the, and the required payment to Sanford would be a Chatham Park shortfall, and they would pay it. If the receipts from the user fees were more than 100% of the, of the required Sanford payment, that would be a surplus, and that would ordinarily be paid to Sanford as a prepayment of the charge and get the balance of the capacity charges paid sooner, unless there was some sort of unforeseen or extraordinary situation that would allow the town to retain that surplus, required payment still had to be made, but the surplus could be held by the town and used for whatever the emergency was that required it to be withheld. But the Chatham Park would give credit for its half of that, of that surplus and reduce the subsequent payment to Sanford. I think that most of the, the blue lines and the red lines on the drafts are pretty consistent, I mean, they're all consistent with that kind of scenario. The, the details are in the text of the language. The only thing that I think that is different than that is an issue regarding, first of all, the potential to lower the per gallon, or the per bedroom use of new construction in Chatham Park. And I don't know, we've, we've talked about this in the past, but typically the, the rules now require a very conservative basis that you have to require 120 gallons per bedroom. So the actual use and the actual flow that's contributed by a dwelling is considerably less than that. Chatham Park is hopeful that at some point the EQ with the state would allow the town to have a lower per gallon, I mean, capacity in a permit for residential uses than 120. Bryan Chapel, for example, has averaged out to actually using about 60 gallons per bedroom. So the difference, of course, is that there's less capacity that's involved in a permit, and so there is less capacity, I mean, more capacity that would be available for other permits. So it's important to, to take that into consideration. Both, both of the drafts, you know, would allow the town and the, and Chatham Park to cooperate on that process, and to the extent that the EQ was willing to allow that to happen, then everybody would get, I mean, Chatham Park would get the benefit of that in terms of lower capacity being permitted. The issue about, excuse me, existing permits, when the flow is less than, I mean, the flow is actually contributing is less than the permit, the Chatham Park version of this allows that difference, if it could be reconciled and calculated and accounted for, to revert basically to Chatham Park and to be available for allocation to future customers of Chatham Park as a part of their 1.725 million gallons of capacity. I think that that's an, an issue that we can resolve, and we certainly need to meet again. The biggest difference between the two drafts is that Chatham Park has proposed certain conditions to their participation in this arrangement, which is a new matter that we've not discussed in the past. It basically provides, it's in paragraph 10 of Mr. Eagle's draft, I believe, it says that the financial obligations on the part of Chatham Park are conditioned upon three different things. One, probably the most important, is that by December of this year, the town would have made, approved all the additional elements and the development plan, the small area plan. That kind of timetable is probably optimistic for you all. Like I said, the Sanford agreement was done in March of last year, and it's now May of 2018, wasn't a year later, and we still haven't reached this issue. So that, that's the biggest difference between the two drafts, and, and again, we've not had a chance to talk with Chatham Park about that, but I think all the other changes that are in one draft or the other are manageable. So more work is to be done on that, but I guess if you all have any comments or questions about that, we can try to address those. And if, if not, I can talk about the Old North State agreement.
Yes, a question. The financial obligations are conditioned on three things, you said.
Yes.
Is it approval of those three things, or three things? Were there two other things?
Yes, I did not. Final approval by the town board of the additional elements, the small area plan and development agreement, that's A. B is approval by the EQ of permitting for construction of the Sanford improvements and treatment of wastewater from the town at the Sanford plant. Of course, they have to do that in order for us to get the loan in the first place, but they, the way this is worded, it's without restrictions of development that would prohibit or impair the development of Chatham Park with the maximum number of residential units and square footage of marshals' face allowed by the master plan. And C, approval by the local government commission and any other state agencies, again, without restrictions on their, on the development, that it would prohibit or impair the development of Chatham Park. None of this is going to be applicable unless the EQ approves the plans for the force main. None of this is going to be approvable or operational or effective until the local government commission approves the finance for this. So, so that part of this is, you know, is implicit, if not explicit, in the way that the agreement was worded. This proposed language adds to that, though, that, that approvals from the state, the EQ or the state local government commission would not impair the development of Chatham I think the bigger issue is the final approval by December for these other things.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm not sure you all could do that.
Well, the other thing about the other two items, which I think I understand the intent, but this intent includes things that go well beyond the capacity of 2 million gallons a day, or 1.25 million gallons a day, plus 499,000, because it says full maximum square footage of residential units in the Chatham Park capacity. That's going to be a heck of a lot more volume than the Sanford agreement contemplates. So it seems like that's something impossible to commit to or to achieve.
Well, again, we've not had an opportunity to discuss this with Chatham Park. But unless it, unless there's some other issues or concerns, then, you know, that's, that's sort of on the list of things to be discussed, and if we can resolve those, then the matter can be backed before you, shortly, maybe even next week.
Okay, and no further questions? Do you have one with the North State, Mayor?
Yes, you all have seen a draft of this many months ago, and this, again, also has been the product of some discussions among staff involving the Old North State representatives and engineering consultants, as well as Chatham Park and the town. And I guess this is, in this version, Mr. Eagle's draft was first, and I saw that, and then I made some corrections and revisions and edits to that, which we, again, have talked about, Mr. Eagle and I have talked about, but nobody else has talked about. But in essence, what this says is that Old North State is, or is committed to building a facility that will be done in two phases, one of which would be 250,000 gallons per day of treatment capacity, and then a phase two that might be in the future for an additional 249,000 gallons of capacity a day. The agreement is to require Chatham, I mean, Old North State and this facility to accept wastewater from the town for its residential and commercial customers in the facility's service area, which is basically all of Chatham Park, and so, and then treat the wastewater to appropriate legal standards required by the state. And again, we talked about in there, if the flow for connections to the system that would be serving the Old North State facility were lowered by the DEQ in terms of the gallons per bedroom, that sort of excess capacity that would be, had been permitted, could be recaptured and recovered and, or reconciled after the actual flow was being received by the plant, so that, that the capacity could be used more economically, I guess, is a fair way, without being tied up on a permit and never actually being used. The cost, the cost of this would be, the town would continue to treat, accept all these people as customers, you would build the customers just like, if they were in this service area, just like you would any other customer of the town sewer system, you would collect the user fees from those customers, and according to this draft, you would remit to Old North State 95% of receipts for that. Those customers are actually being served by this facility. The 5% that you would retain would be the cost of doing the administrative part of billing and collection and whatever operations maintenance there might be for the collection line in Chatham Park going to the plant facility. Wastewater coming from the plant, the first part of the effluent would be directed to the town and for transmittal after coronation by the town at, to the 3M reuse water customer. Any excess over and above that, that this plant would produce over time, would then be available for reuse in, within Chatham Park, that's go back upstream to the Chatham Park facility. If there were any excess over and above that, then that could come back to town and be used for other reuse customers that the town might have in addition to 3M or, or discharge into the creek, as the case may be. So the 250,000 gallons per day is the amount of the flow that would go in, that could go into the creek, if it goes to 3M or if it goes to reuse, doesn't count, or it's, it's extra. So that's the, I think, the rationale for that.
Mr. Messick, good question.
Mm-hmm.
The 95% that's going to Old North State, the 5%, do we know that that 5% is going to cover our expenses for administration fees or whatever we do? Do we know that that's going to cover 5%?
Well, that sort of, it probably depends on the fee, user fee.
Of course. Right.
So 5% of something would certainly take care of that, but I don't know what the something is. But you all have talked about maintaining the user fee at the same rate as you do now, roughly speaking. So I, I, that's a Mr. Grubbs, that question.
We don't know yet.
Man, hey.
All right. Well, I think this document also, well, this document also mentions.
It's, it's, we did, we're raising our rates, correct?
We, you know, it appears as though.
Treatment is going to be less than what they are today.
But the document also includes a clause that says our rates will be no less than what they are today, and if they are, then the town still has to cover 95%. So that's, we're unlikely to lower our rates from here moving forward. I think in general, that's probably likely, given growth and the need to grow our interest in, and that being one of the mechanisms by which we can do that. But I have a similar concern about the 95%, 5% line, is not that whether or not 5% covers our administrative fee, but the fact that outside of this treatment plant, we will be responsible for the infrastructure, for all the pipes coming to it, all the pipes leaving it. And embedded in our user fees is typically some portion of that fee that goes to long-term maintenance of those other facilities. So my concern really is, is the 95-5 split appropriate, one for administrative fees and long-term maintenance of this other infrastructure that is only collected through user fees? So I, I'd like for us to have a better idea of what we're doing today, if there's a way for us to understand what our budget today, what proportion of our fees is going for maintenance, the plant's going for maintenance of the pipes, all the other ancillary expenditures that we have, and C, if 95-5 is available.
The other thing, I'd say, two, two things, and I think those are both really good points. The 5% figure, you'll recall from previous budgets, years back, the town used to use a 5% administrative fee, the general fund would charge the enterprise fund for, essentially for billing, for customer service, for things of that nature. That was, that was really for the general fund to be able to recapture money that the general fund spent on maintaining the enterprise fund, so to speak. Seemed to work for a time, then we ran into problems keeping the enterprise fund balanced, so the, the general fund stopped charging the enterprise fund that fee, and we kind of did away with that, and then we never really went back to it. So 5% is kind of a standard thing, and I think a lot of communities will, will do the same thing in terms of their budget, they'll use that 5% figure. Is it enough? Honest, honest answer to your question, I, as I say here, I don't know that, that we've ever put the science to it. That gets it, that gets at Mr. Yoko's point, in that that, that piece has never really been determined. And second, the, the task of trying to come up with what parts of our budget went towards maintaining and repairing different parts of our system. Davenport and Luthen started to get into that at a pretty early stage, when we were trying to determine, when we were laying out all the cost information for this, when we were creating these, these really big complicated tables, you guys looked at it a year ago. And I don't know that we ever really cracked that at the time that we, we looked at it. I think we made some good estimates, but I don't know that we ever really got it. So, I mean, I talked to Adam a little bit today about trying to put some science into that 5% figure, just on the administrative side. that 5% figure, just on the administrative side, we can take a little bit of that, we can probably circle back on the technical piece and the field piece, as I would call it, and see if that's active too. And I think some of the system development analysis could start to get at some of that too. I don't know that we're ever going to be 100% on the nose. I mean, it's just, it's just a lot of pencil sharpening. But we can try.
Well, I know there's some interest in moving these agreements forward, and I don't know what kind of timeframe we're talking about for sharpening the pencils on on this matter. And is there a reasonable amount of time with both parties? And if not, if there's a way to, there's some language in here that allows this to be addressed in a future time.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to get that kind of analysis, that's on June 1st. But, I mean, we could, we could put some work into it, I don't know if we'll get that done. Everything else that we have, Ken?
So I have some questions about Section 7 on the Old North State. Given that we don't yet have an appraisal of the value of our NPDS, as one word member, I'm not ready to agree to immediately provide authority without language right there.
This draft contemplates that the town's NPDS permits is the town's NPDS permit. This is just flow that's being used as a part of that permit. This is not a conveyance of the permit to anybody else, it's not, at least this does not contemplate any kind of joint permit, this is the town's permit. The Old North State would be responsible for treatment of the effluent as it leaves their plant, so whatever the parameters of the permit are. So we would require them to treat the wastewater, whatever the permit requires the treatment process. So this would be flow that would either go to 3M, go to reuse, or go to the creek, but it would be under the town's permit.
And it would be utilized to begin operations at the Old North State Water Facility?
Well, the state certainly would have to allow, yes.
So it is a sharing of this grant?
I don't, well, you may want to consider it that way, but I don't, it's not the way this is worded, it's not what it's intended. It's going to be, you know, at the boundary, the way it's currently contemplated, the Old North State would be responsible for the effluent in the plant and receive it, and then treat it, and send it down the pipe, and it would become the town's at that point. So it's the town's flow that is going into the creek.
Mr. Masick, now, permitting is 3.2, is that correct?
Not for the Robertson Creek, it's 1.275, I believe, or 2.5.
All right, this is.
The Robertson Creek.
And John, as you mentioned, water quality is all the town, and in this regard is all the town as well.
Except I also still, maybe I haven't found a.
Do we have this electronic?
I didn't see it on the agenda on the.
I certainly can.
If I had electronic, I could have already searched for this, but connections between existing town sewer system and the U-Banks Road facility.
I think there's going to be a connection from the U-Banks Road facility to the town's facility at the wastewater treatment.
I'm aware of that way, that direction, but number one, they need some flow to start the facility. And number two, I have this continuing concern that we have, any older part of town relies upon a facility that at some point we're going to have to transition away from and start using the Sanford force main. And I think there needs to be a connection between the old, for example, Pittsburgh Christian Village, sources of wastewater on that side of town. In the event of an emergency or breakdown, using the U-Banks Road facility to treat sewage on the old part of town.
I think topography may have something to do with that, but the engineers is here, he could talk and speak to that.
Well, I think, John, my understanding is the design of the facility is to accommodate exactly that, that effluent can be pumped in either direction in the same pipe, so that the decentralized plant is to treat water to a certain standard. But there will come a time when the effluent arriving at that plant exceeds the discharge permit into the creek, and it may take raw effluent and send it to us to send to Sanford. And as I recall, you could throw the switch and pump it back, raw effluent received at the plant, and send it back to the decentralized plant for treatment.
So I have no idea if that's in this agreement?
I don't think it's in this agreement, but I think it's in part of the design project. So I, we had a word from the designers and quite some times ago, so my assumption is that's still a component of the design.
But in order to do that, you have to turn it back, and we're not going to pump it back.
You can stop pumping here and start pumping back.
Back up.
It's, it's all under pressure, so back is not really a.
You don't say that.
But that's a rather clever.
Do we have, do we have the answer here?
Well, yes and no. What, first minute advice is comments. There are facilities passing from, you know, a lot of the area in the north to and past the U-Banks facility. So for example, 15501 area, when Suddles Road main is in place, there are provisions to shunt flow from that whole 15501 area in whatever proportion, because you have that restriction farther down into town, the old part of town, so some of that flow would come this way, especially at startup. Also that, you know, the Christian Village pump station can come offline whenever there will be town's decision that that will connect or can connect to defeat the plant. Now, Mr. Fioco's point, yes, there is.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can or will connect?
Your call.
Right.
It's your station. So it would be able to, to get right into that interceptor that's being designed, so that that pump station can be abandoned, but, you know, it's your call and ours, but it would be able to, which would make sense from the town's standpoint.
But what you're saying, though, is that the Pittsburgh Christian hung could hook onto your interceptor going from the decentralized plant to the old town wastewater plant?
No, it would be upstream.
So he's talking, he's talking about going back that way?
It would be upstream and come into the plant. The interceptor comes past there, that pump station will flow into the interceptor before it gets to the decentralized plant.
Okay.
It's upstream of that. To Mr. Fioco's point, yes, there is a pipeline, a force main between the two plants, so to speak. That force main is destined to be used to shunt additional flow from the north to Sanford eventually, when the decentralized plant is at capacity. Before it gets to capacity, yes, if you wanted to, you could have a pump station, you know, done down the old plant that could pump in reverse, were there a problem. You know, it's going to be short-lived, though, because then once there's more than this decentralized plant's capacity already getting to the plant from upstream, you can also pump back, because, you know, if you're not, if Sanford's out of operation, there's no place to go but to creek then. We're already over our capacity, and we can't do that unless this plant keeps getting expanded, which is also possible for that kind of thing, for that backup, so to speak. So I think you're both right, there are provisions for both of those, there's some little complications with both of those, but yeah, if that made any sense.
Yeah, I'd like that, this agreement.
And I know, off topic a little bit from what before, Mr. Masick did mention a lot about the DEQ allocation rates and such. I was just at the North Carolina Water Quality Association meeting last week, and that association, which is pretty much all the largest utility systems in North Carolina, that's sort of their political activism group for municipal water systems, wastewater systems, they have a proposal going to the General Assembly for a 25% across-the-board reduction in allocations because of low-flow fixtures and water efficiency that's prevalent now. So they're going to be pushing the GA to get DEQ to reduce that 120 per bedroom to 90 per bedroom across the board anyway. We'll see if that makes it into this long session.
Is it limited to residential uses or vertical uses as well?
It's worded a 25% across-the-board charter, and I don't know that they're going to get either of them into a bill in this session, but at least we know that those folks are going to try, for what it's worth. I'll come back in a minute.
Continue, questions or how folks want to address it?
I guess on both of them, I would just reiterate that if you have questions or concerns that we can address with talking with Chatham Park and Old North State on this one and Chatham Park on the other one, sooner is better than later. The goal, of course, is that we could, the staff could present something to you that we think is, that's acceptable with Chatham Park, and hopefully through your consideration, you can say whatever you want to, but at least as far as the financial guarantee is concerned, it's real important to get that done right away.
And that's the Sanford component, well, Sanford agreement of the two. I know we're trying to get them both done at the same time, but Ryan, I'd like your best estimate on what would be on this 95-5 split, as soon as possible, and, you know, focusing on Sanford agreement with the June 1 deadline?
Yeah, I'll, I mean, I want to be realistic with what I can actually provide.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we can start in tomorrow, some of this divided and everything else we're working on as far as that, as far as that goes.
Like I said, if there's a way to put some language in here that allows the agreement to be executed with the ability to revisit this when we've got better information, I'm not talking a year from now, I'm talking the next several months. And, you know, it's got everything in here that I need, and here, John wants another matter addressed, so that's my, I mean, good point.
Let me tell you a couple of other parameters. I mean, the assumption is that the customers who will be served by this plan will pay the same fees per gallon as all the rest of the customers we have. So there would be one uniform rate for 1,000 gallons for everybody. That's the easiest way to do it. There may be some reason to do it differently if you were inclined to do that. Of course, administratively, that creates other issues and all sorts of problems tracking that, but, so having a single rate is the easiest way to do it, is the fairest way to do it, even though some wastewater is going to be treated at this facility and some is going to eventually go to Sanford. Mr. Farrell, this facility is not as cheap as Sanford. This is quite expensive, and so that's why there's a difference in the way this is being done. This is a, this is an extraordinary facility that's going to cost a lot of money and will be available in the short term, but it's not a long-term solution for the town or Chatham Park. Sanford is a longer-term solution.
So one of the reasons this is a premium facility is that the quality of the produced reused water will be higher than what we've heard from the making.
I don't know that that's true.
That's what I didn't believe.
Yes, on two counts. Well, because we're designing it to go ahead and meet type 2 reuse, even though we don't have a need for that, like irrigation of food chain crops, we are designed to meet that standard, and the new discharge standards that your plant doesn't meet right now also impose much more severe nutrient standards than even the reclaim water rules do, and it's designed to do both.
So a part of the beauty of that, and Chatham Park investors committed to laying purple pipe in their development, is that we're preparing to build demand for that very high-quality reused water. I don't think, though, we yet have a clear path from point A to point B to an actual delivery of customers for that reused water in the PDD. That's important, because that might be used in negotiation with DEQ to give us a little bit of flexibility on the allocation of our NPDS permit. This is one of the reasons why, in August of last year, this board voted unanimously that the NPDS permit has value to town, it has a value, it needs to be appraised. We've asked for an appraisal. It was unanimous request from this board. That needs to be addressed with this language, and we're going to proceed with this language. And I also think that we need to understand what the plan is to actually utilize that reused water, so.
On that point, I believe you have an ordinance in the books that says that reused quality water shall be used if it's available. It will become available with this.
Project builds reuse infrastructure, it's why all of Chatham Parks is so, quite a bit of purple pipe in everything that's built at this point.
And so all of those residences will also have meters and connections to the purple pipe, and all of the commercial locations will also be connected to the purple pipe?
That's my understanding.
I have access to it.
Let's put that in writing.
John, I can attest that Penguin Place has a purple pipe.
It may be that something like that ought to be in a small area plan or in the development agreement or someplace.
Development agreement.
Other than this particular one, because that really involves Chatham Park and not Old North State. They're not going to be putting the button like that, so.
Yeah, I would say the one other thing that the Old North plant does is provide a bulk loading station as well, for, you know, landscaping, dust control, that's in the plans.
Perfect.
So John, I think you're saying that the use of reused water, distribution of reused water, is going to preserve capacity in our NPDS permit, which is a discharge.
I believe that it could be negotiated with DEQ.
I think if you can have a permanent solution for where material is going other than streaming high, I think you can.
Yeah.
And Tim, you know more about that than I do.
Yeah, I mean, right now, basically, the NPDS is all about what really makes it to the creek, as opposed to what comes through the plant. So as long as, you know, if you put 300 through the plant, then 100 goes to reuse and 200 goes to the creek, the NPDS reporting only sees 200. So you've still got your full NPDS capacity. What the state hasn't done is allocate firm-rated capacity to, like, residential irrigation when you don't have control over that. If it were a dedicated site, common areas that you can say, this is what we can guarantee, then you can get firm capacity for that, but we actually permitted a development in the Charlotte area once that had firm capacity on residential lots, but that irrigation system had to be managed by a third party to guarantee that that's where the water could go, that had no other district. That's the only one I know in the state that was permitted. That's the only one I know in the state that was permitted that way. That was right before the crash, then the developer went under and it never got built.
Now, I think that's, that's the problem we have with 3M. It's, there's no, it's not a guaranteed, doesn't excite, I don't think, because they don't, they just take whatever they want that day. There's no stories out there.
Right. Which is why the NPDS capacity assigned to the plant has to match the capacity of the plant, because that's the only firm capacity, even though everyone's going to try to reuse as much as possible and minimize the discharges. It's, it also should provide help in whatever your water allocation interests and acquisitions are going to be down the road too, which should minimize potable water use as well. We can dispose that.
That's where it gets interesting if you're using reclaimed water to flush toilets.
Or you're irrigating where you used to use potable, dispose of that, but certainly for toilet flushing, things that you know have to be used, and once they're only connected to reclaim, dispose of potable with a certain.
Does it mention the use of potable water?
Well, I thought that's where we were going, was the uses that we can guarantee. I'm confused. And I see, I see, I see the entire board.
John, I, I think, you know, the concept of generating reused water and distributing it is exactly where we want to be, what we want to do.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. But I don't, I don't make that connection, though, with this NPDS permit appraisal. You see its value in the fact that we have it and use it, and one way we're using it is subcontracting treatment to another entity without having to build it ourselves. And I think that's where the value of that permit is. I think, I think we are devaluing it right now and not using it when we have the opportunity, but we don't have the capacity on our treatment to do so. So I think the ability to not license it, but use it by designating, by allowing another pipe discharge is, is getting the value out of the permit itself. I don't know that there's a monetary value to it other than using it or not. And the monetary value is represented by not using it, because you're not having growth associated with using it.
There's a clear monetary value in what we've put into staff time, the fees.
In achieving, acquiring it?
Yes. And we need that very much from this appraisal request from August of last year. And a couple of engineers that I've spoken to said there's other ways to make an estimate of its value as well, opportunity cost, so.
So then, grateful, in appraisal, not of the value, but of the cost.
I think what he's trying to say is that kind of the administrative cost of acquiring the NPDS permit.
Yeah.
In my travels, that's the only thing anyone ever came up with as an appraisal.
Well, let's get that.
I mean, that's, that's, that's much easier than making something up.
I think the value is actually more than what the financial cost is because you can't get them anymore, so it's, well, I put a price on that. If something's not available, you have to go out and get the permit at any time you want, that makes it more valuable, that's how I think it will go.
Well, if you don't use it, you may not have it.
I don't think that's an accurate statement. I think that we're going to use it, this town will use it. We have been reassured by DEQ that our application is, is still under consideration.
You're not going to use the robbers and pretty if you don't let them use it. You're going to go to Sanford.
Well, we're also embarking on a master planning process. We don't, we don't know what we'll be doing.
That's right, but if you, if you don't let them do it, and you don't use it yourselves for some other treatment facility, you may not have it. It's not guaranteed that you'll have it forever. The 750,000 gallons was acquired at least 30 years ago. I don't know that the town has any records of any engineering that costs involved in that. I don't see how you're going to come up with a number. The amendment in 2014 that went from 750 to 1.25, there may be some records that you could come up with. I, I just don't see how you're going to come up with a number for the original 750,000 gallons.
We won't have anything from 30 years ago. It would be just, it would be an estimate that I would, I would probably call on other engineering firms to help me. I mean, for what that would be worth.
And I guess if there's a, a cost model evaluation, is the idea that we want to somehow recoup some of that? Because if we were designing and building this decentralized plant, would we charge ourselves that?
So my sense is that we're engaged primarily with one applicant, Chatham Park, Chatham Park investors. And they have been granted value in their land, or will be granted value in their land through the process that we're engaged in together. And yet, Old Part of Town still has tremendous burdens. We have an obligation to replace very old sewer and water treatment facilities. And I'm concerned about the equity of the situation. We have something valuable. And the way I've read tonight, we're prepared to give it away, and I'm not prepared to vote for that.
Do you mean the permit? We're not giving the permit. Is that what you're saying?
That's what they said.
No, 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 no. We're not giving the permit.
Essentially, we're giving the use of the permit away.
We are allowing them to use the permit, but we're.
It's a building with.
It is, the permit belongs to the town. We are allowing them to use the permit.
But once they commit to it, then it might as well not be the town's.
No, it's still the town's, because you still have, yeah, it's still the town's.
I, I understand.
Yeah, they cannot. We're not giving them the permit.
Not currently. I, I don't think John means deliver on this. I just think he means it will primarily be used.
It will be used by them.
And once we commit that, we may need it in Old Town to Pittsburgh, but we won't have to have to say that it'll already be used. We can't just say, okay, now we want it back. Then that won't be an option, so we'll have to spend money to, to do something else. I think that's how I understand it.
If, if we are planning to build that fine, we were going to build a wastewater treatment facility. We do not have the money to build a wastewater treatment facility. I don't know if we'll have the money in 10 years to build it. So basically, this permit will be used by them, and it will definitely help Pittsburgh. It may, if we were building a wastewater treatment facility, maybe we could put in here that in 10 years, we're going to build it, so we want our permit to come back to the town Pittsburgh, and we be the owners of it and use it in our own plant. But if we don't have that, there's, we, we're going to let them use it, but it'll out. And I do see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. But it still belongs to the town Pittsburgh. That's why, that's the only reason why I went for that all the time. That's always been my concern, was that the permit remained with Pittsburgh and allowed this up, to allow them to use the permit.
We're allowing 499, 449, 499? Yeah, 499,000 gallons now. If the town decides we need to build another treatment facility on-site, we can now discharge another 750 underneath the NPDS permit into Rosemont. We could conceivably build another plant and ship the 197 to the Hall River. That's totally using the NPDS permits just for the discharge. We're just subcontracting the treatment component of that to somebody else and using our NPDS, using our NPDS permit to enable that. So we're, we're using it, we're, by making use of it, is making it valuable. But I think the change is growth, more users, more ability to generate revenue for this infrastructure than in Old Town that is in the, I mean, our current rate payers are not able to generate enough income or enough revenue for us to fix those on a larger scale basis. Having more users is a way to generate an assortment, and that plant generates more users and more tax dollars for the general fund as well. So it's approved of use of the permit by allowing somebody else to build a thing approved and afford to be built.
And we didn't want discharge into the Hall River. That's what we were trying to avoid, and we did feel, that's what we were allowed to discharge it to the Hall River. Already we've got this house in and all these things going on. So I think this is a good alternative to achieve, to help us with the growth and to achieve the treatment of this proposed facility.
The challenge that I have, and, and we've talked about this before, is we don't have a clear understanding of what the future of this entire greater Pittsburgh region is. We're beginning to have an understanding of what the future of PDD will be, but we don't have a master plan or water and sewer. We don't know whether or not we're going to be needing to build something in addition to the Sanford Forest Bank and the U-Banks Road Plant. So I'm a belt-suspending kind of person. I think that we need to reserve our options, and this is why I'd like to see very clear legal, legal binding language that we're going to be directing that reused water somewhere other than as necessitated by the NPDS. Or step, I didn't say that correctly, but I would like to see clear plan for freeing up of the discharge permit capacity so that in future, we might use the NPDS elsewhere as the PDD. And I still believe that this is one of the last things that we have of value that we need to keep and maintain. The utilization of our NPDS permit capacity, I have heard not a very cooperative or engaging tone about the idea of land for police departments, land for fire departments, land for public facilities. I'm pleased that the agreement with the schools is finding, finalized for the schools. We might have a bit of a concern, you've identified, which you have, but thank you. But I think that that should be a model for a modest and small enough of land for police and fire and public facilities that are needed. I, I'm just, I, I, it's a philosophy you're making for me. I don't think that development should be built with the assumption that the people are then coming, that those taxpayers are going to have to pay for the infrastructure. I think the infrastructure needs to be built for the development, and police departments, fire departments, infrastructure. Sewer and water are infrastructure. That shouldn't be on taxpayers. That NPDS permit, granted, we're doing ownership of it, but we're giving it in terms of the capacity in this language.
They are using it.
We're being bound by the structure of this language.
They are using it.
To utilize that permit. And I'm not satisfied that it's at some point in the future, we're going to get it back. But theoretically, we should be able to get it back. We're going to have all this purple pipe out there. We're going to have that reused water market. So let's just see how we connect it up.
So each Chatham Park is putting in the purple pipe that the town, we don't have it.
How on earth are we going to invest that kind of infrastructure? That's not, that's not how we do it.
About generating revenue is the way to do it.
We're going to make it up on the margins.
No, by growing.
Make it up on volume?
Well, by growing, we will generate revenue that will enable us to do things we can't do right now because we're so small.
No, that would, that would be.
Some of that.
Perhaps that would be something that would be compelling, persuaded by a master planning process. A comprehensive master planning process.
I think a town and a city is a non-stop master planning process.
Sure.
So we are plugged in at this point in time, and I don't think that there's anyone that doesn't think we've got a look to the future, another alternative to beyond this 2.5 million gallons. I think everybody knows that. I think we've all agreed to it, that it's a critical path item. I think taking this, these steps only helps us along that path.
And what part will the comprehensive plan that's being done by the county, does that feed us the kind of information that we need? And, and when is it supposed to be done? I don't even know that.
Yeah, the scope of work. Thank you, Mr. Griesberg, for sharing that with us. I've, I've read it, and I, I have questions that I'm still trying to help with to understand the extent to which that master plan will address our needs. But it's a $110,000 project. Chatham County is kind of like, well, this is the bargaining bond. We're shooting $6,600. And may very you recall in our conversation with Mr. Ed Holland from Los Angeles, the kind of master planning comprehensive process that he envisioned, I think the word million for it was in that conversation, more millions over a 40-year process, the level of complexity.
Well, just to remind the board, we'll also be collecting our Q's on the 18th for, for our water treatment plan, these studies as well. That will take into, in some ways, there's going to be some overlapping information there, but that will guarantee, I think, between, between the county plan, which is comprehensive again with the towns, the towns for all in the county, will be, also be able to, I think, drill into our water treatment plan with this study as well. So I think we're going to come up with some pretty good information, pretty good long-term information. I don't, I don't know that it would delay anything that we're talking about here, but it should help us in years' work.
I think the conversation's been really valuable. I guess my question is, are we ready, are we going to be ready at the end of the month if we meet deadlines to be able to wrap? if we meet deadlines to be able to wrap this up? We have to, we have to at least approve the capacity by the June first date. Is that correct?
That would be optimal.
Because we've gotten several extensions, is that correct? Okay, are we, um, are we clear on what need, what else needs to be provided between now and the next meeting, or is there a list?
Well, I, I think as far as the, um, the Old North State agreement is concerned, we have some information and some, uh, obviously concerns that Mr. Fielco and Mr. Bonnet have raised, and we can address those and hopefully we can, um, make some progress on some of that, at least.
Is the board ready to move on to the master's update, or?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, given the time of the night, um, I'd like to, um, just, uh, just make a couple of quick comments. One, with the Dirty City upcoming meetings. Um, there is another meeting that the board expressed interest in with regard to, I think, uh, it was an informational session off-campus throughout the town or in Raleigh, um, dealing with accessory buildings or accessory uses.
And carer.
Yeah, um, if you don't mind, I'm gonna go ahead and register the entire board for that. If somebody does not want to go, tell me now. But for the cost, the relatively low cost of registering, I'm just gonna register everything. So, um, we'll also be reaching out to the planning board as well. And that will be due by, those, that confirmation is due by, agreed by the deadline, so.
That one's on the fourth, by the way, June fourth.
June fourth.
That's a accessory dwelling unit?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, this is to hit our planning board.
Just go down to the engineer hiring process. We entered in the two candidates this past week. We're finalizing the decision. That's a detail that I can get right now. There's some, some conversations that are taking place right now. So, um, we will keep you posted on that, as soon as something, something good or bad happens. Uh, Newtown Hall, I wanna talk about this just, just for a minute before I go. The, um, building program meetings with Hobbs Architects have been completed. I recall from previous updates, the, um, and from the initial presentation when we entered into where we engaged with Hobbs originally, that pre-design phase was going to involve extensive conversations and work with, uh, with town staff and with county staff. Because you'll recall that the county staff is, is, uh, is at least at this point initially intending to help and share space in the building. So these conversations have dealt with what kind of room and what kind of functions each one of these departments would need. And also doing some projections too, uh, on what kind of future staff we would be looking at, trying to basically accommodate, uh, future staff growth with the size of the buildings we have. And so, as I mentioned, those, those conversations have wrapped up. And now we're at the stage where I think it's appropriate for Hobbs to circle back, uh, with you guys, with the board, and talk about what we've learned to this point. And then give some feedback from you guys on, on a couple of, a couple of key questions, really, that we've kind of, uh, we've kind of run into at this point in time. You know, I'll kind of oversimplify this to a certain, certain extent. But some site-related issues that we've come up with, you know, that we're gonna need some input on from you guys, at least initially, would be parking, um, versus open space and gathering. And we've all expressed interest. I know I would, you know, we, I would, I wanna have, I wanna have extensive parking improvements for our downtown, but I also want to make sure that we are increasing the amount of opening gathering space in our downtown as well. How much and how we do that, I think, is something that we're gonna have to converse with Hobbs a little bit on and, and get your input and then hopefully the public's input as well. Um, second would be public use and activities inside the building. This is really kind of coming up with the county more, with the, with the contemplated county uses inside the building more so even than with the town. Uh, because the county departments right now that we've discussed at this point, there's three different departments, three different departmental areas from the county level. One would be the, uh, one would be elections. The second would be the health department. The third would be parks and rec. Um, each have their own challenges. Health department has an extensive number of offices that they would be using. It's, it's a large department. In a way, that's, that's, uh, that's a different challenge, really, than the other two present, which would have a little bit of office, or not as much office, but more programming space. Uh, programming in terms of elections, because on elections, you, you know, having gone, having just gone through that, you know, up in the Platinum complex, you can see what sort of activities happen out there, um, you know, during early, early voting and on election day. So it's, you know, do we, do we want, you know, do we want those types of uses to be part of this new, this new municipal kind of place? Parks and Rec, uh, Zumba classes are not, they don't whisper in a Zumba class, for example. And, you know, the, um, you know, aerobics, you know, can, can sometimes, uh, be a little bit noisier than a coffee machine. So, um, so those are the things, I think, that we wanna talk about. And then finally, we haven't really gotten into, I mean, you know, Taylor and I, I think maybe in conversations you might have had with others, might have kind of started tiptoeing into some outside design elements. Um, I've tried to stay away from it with a ten-foot pole because number one, I don't know what I'm doing as far as designing the outward appearance of a building like that. Number two, it's not, it shouldn't really be my decision on that anyway. And, and so I think that's something that you and the public are really gonna have to tackle. You know, to kind of come full circle with this, what we've been doing with that pre-design phase is to really kind of come up with the geometric footprint for what that building is supposed to be. We kind of got into some of the uses. Now we need, now we need, I think, to bring a larger circle in to help determine the nature of some of those uses and then what the building's gonna look like and how it's gonna be used over the building. I think that's what really comes down to. And it's a really exciting process and it's, it's kind of energizing. And I hope you'll, you'll feel the same way, too. I'd like to, unless I, you know, unless I hear any alternatives, I'd really like to bring Hobbs back at one of the next couple of meetings. The next meeting might be kind of heavy, but one of the June meetings for sure, because I, I think it's really, I think the public's really kind of craving some information on this. And so I think it's really important to get some of this stuff out there, get you guys to provide a little bit of input in the direction, see where you're at with it. And then we can move into a public phase where we start, you know, we start holding some public, public meetings, maybe some gathering, some of this other stuff, too, if you're willing. So, um, so anyway, that's, that's all I can think of to say about that for the moment. To tell you the truth, I'm kind of, I've talked a lot tonight, but I am kind of talked out. You can see the, um, you can see some of the other stuff we've been working on. Um, the bicycle and pedestrian plan, you gave the go-ahead tonight. So we'll get the state working on that. The Chatham County Sewer and Water Master Plan, we approved the M O U for that. Um, we're expecting to complete that within about six months with Hazen. Um, Sewer Asset Management Plan is ongoing. Water Asset Management Plan, we just, I just got word today that, I just got formal approval for that. Uh, today, we're going to be looking at a resolution at an upcoming meeting for some match component for that. So this speaks to our existing, uh, water plan, goes into a little bit about our future, but mostly existing, really kind of helps do some of the things that are very similar to what the, uh, what the sewer collection system planning is, is doing right now. Uh, then I mentioned a little bit ago, Public Water Supply Treatment Expansion Study. That's the report that's specific to our water treatment plant. Assistant Development Fees Study, we should have, we should have reported from Woodland Company here in the next meeting or, or two. Um, and then we have upcoming meetings and, and just, you know, obviously budget, uh, we would be submitting budget, the initial budget at the next meeting. Um, and then I think we want to schedule the public hearing for, uh, we want to schedule the public hearing for the first June meeting, although I know that I have that in there. At any rate, that's, that's my update for tonight that I think of at this point. Might be wired to other things, but if I think of them, I'll let you know. Thank you very much.
Jan, do you have commissioner concerns?
No, ma'am.
That, I just had a quick question without a name tag for a while. Is that something we're able to order?
Yeah, I mentioned that a little while ago. I think if, if you don't mind, if you want to, we can update the name tags.
Be great.
That'd be great. But I'm just.
Thank you, yeah, it's a great idea.
Not a concern, just, there was an item on our consent agenda tonight, and it was the master plan, the Chatham County Water and Sewer, or Water Master Plan? Yeah, Water and Sewer Master Plan. And it listed all the municipalities and I think Wausau's in there, where the modeling, the water modeling information was coming from. But Pittsburgh, I have a big question for that. And I think we've got tons of data.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's, I think when they had, I think that's a, that's a, yeah, answer. I asked the same, I had a question mark, but the same question mark. And that's, that's a, what is the word I'm trying to think of right now? That's kind of a legacy mistake.
Place holder.
Yeah. I'll, I'll go with that, good.
Good, so it doesn't represent, does the town of Pittsburgh do what they're modeling?
I think they, they were trying to, I think literally what had happened was is they were trying to get a hold of our engineer at the time and wasn't able to do it when they put that out.
Okay. Great.
I would say this, that, um, I attended Northwood High School Dance Recital. And that is something everyone she goes to, it is just fantastic. It is fantastic. So that's a good, it was, um, it's very, very impressive. And you talk about artistry and all that, that, I mean, it's right there. It is great. They, they're high school students, lots of them are field playing in it. I went to the physical show. Yeah, twenty-two, twenty-six, and then one on Friday, East half. But it was very good, and I would like to encourage, next time I'll ask you to the Facebook, encourage everyone to attend the Northwood, um, presentation that provided for our page. They would love to see you there.
Mr. Greco spec, please pass along kudos to Mr. Jones, who's left, but, um, how the good work he did on the crematory operations text amendment. We're glad to see that moving forward. Um, a question for him that I should have asked earlier, and I apologize, on the highway patrol tower, um, red lights, not the strobe lights, hopefully?
I'll find out.
And, um, the one for dioxide in question. Uh, Mayor, thank you so much for your continued diligence on this, pursuing it and monitoring it, your communication with the state university. Um, it did come to light that there is new declaration from EPA that it is no longer in question, is, um, a, a likely carcinogen. Um, so it is definitely a concern for us, it is no longer in question. Um, and, um,
Got a picket?
Yes, Mr. Picket. Um, Mr. Greco spec, you could have a conversation with him about sampling because that same fact sheet, um, I guess I, I didn't see, no, I did see you on that. That same fact sheet refers to something about the method of sample preparation. EPA's guidance on that has changed. Uh, and I'm curious if maybe that might help explain the disparity between NC State's numbers and our numbers. Um, secondly, if there's any way that we can do something nimble and creative to squeeze a little bit more utility out of, uh, the testing dollars we're already spending. Um, he indicated in email, he's doing once a month, a hundred and fifty bucks or so. Uh, if we could maybe, I don't know, if maybe Deb might have something to say about that, how it might, um, or even if the data is necessary, I don't know if it's necessary. But it occurs to me that since this contaminant is showing up on a very irregular basis, if we had a thirty-day sampling system and we then averaged the sample once a month and maintained specimens.
Something more, something more rigorous. Yeah, I see the direction you're going.
Um, and then finally, um, thank you also for your work on the EV charging station. We had an update on the second installation.
Yeah, we're having a little bit of, a little bit of trouble with that second installation. As you recall, the original, original idea was to do the community house, so that there isn't really a good spot at the community house. It doesn't either place it way behind the building at a considerable cost or in the front of the building, um, kind of an unsafe position and in, in the way of some of the future improvements that we, we are hauling away with that plan there. Um, so that kind of moved us over to fifty West Salisbury, the Newtown Hall site. And there's two different locations at the Newtown Hall site that we're contemplating. One would be on the street, but is a bit more expensive, and we're really trying to get that figure down below what we've, what we've budgeted for. Having trouble doing that. The other is on, in the parking lot, close-ish to the existing building. And of course, there's, there's gonna come a day on that site, probably sometime after, the way I would be eyeballing it was, would be that, that existing building will be demolished more than likely sometime shortly after the last first Sunday of this calendar year. And so I'm, I'm reluctant to put it too close to the building if we're gonna have, if we're gonna have some construction going on there. So I'm, I was talking to Joel today, and I'm gonna, Joel from Charge Point, excuse me, Chatham Electric, and I'll talk to Lenny from Charge Point tomorrow about another issue. And we're gonna, we're gonna come up with something for another site. But we've essentially got the, we've essentially got the one in Holmes Park completed. The only issue with that would be executing an agreement with Charge Point. Um, which I'm not really clear on some of the terms. But the one at, the one at Holmes Park is basically ready to go. And as my understanding is, it could be, could be used with, with some of the accounting information.
And how about the pocket park idea?
Putting it in the pocket park?
Oh, just outside of the pocket park, in front of the?
Yeah, reluctant to do that because the, it would take away, I think, what, what happens is it takes away a parking spot from the downtown business owner. I mean, if the board wants to take on that issue, we can consider it.
It would be a very prominent signpost that we are looking to the future.
Talk to your colleagues about that one.
And then, um, another idea, I think, uh, I don't know who initiated this idea early on, was a temporary permanent installation, perhaps at the back of the building here.
Yeah, I think this, I, I think, I think I'm more agreeable to doing one here, um, for a couple of different reasons.
In fact, up and move to the Newtown Hall?
Yeah, I can talk to you a little bit more.
It's not necessary, I just, you're, you're moving forward on it, thank you.
Yeah, I hear, I, yeah, I hear you. I wanna kind of come back to that location, do that something else, that's my vote to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.